We pray, God, that you would give us the wisdom and understanding, God, and direction, Lord, as we look at each case, and grateful that we can serve this beautiful city that we're called to, in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the court please call the roll?
Member Robert Insirpi?
Here.
Member Barbara Craig?
Here.
Member Russ Winn?
Here.
Chairman Kurlander?
Here.
Member Brunswick?
Here.
Member Donley?
Here.
Member Worster?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the prior meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes accepted.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Third. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Unanimous. This is the time for public comment. I would suggest if there is anybody who wants to speak to an issue, that you wait until the cases, that both sides have had an opportunity to present the case. I will ask for public comment at that time, so there's more of a context in what you're saying. You're free, of course, to speak now if you wish, but I would think it might serve you better if you waited. With that, is there any public comment at this time? Hearing none. The first case is the Vision Baptist Church Cellular Tower Special Exception.
I'd like to add to the record. I had a phone call from Pastor Ernie last night, and he was just asking about this case coming up, so I wanted to disclose that. And we just kind of just discussed about the procedure, what he was getting ready to get involved with. So just wanted to make that on public record.
And for the record, Pastor Ernie is?
Is the pastor at Vision Baptist Church.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for letting us know that.
I can hear them.
Are we going to?
We have, sorry Chairman Kurlander, Special Counsel Spain, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay.
City's outside land use counsel Brent Spain is on the line. At this time, if there's anyone who intends to testify on this item, or actually if you intend to speak at all on this item, including staff, would you please stand, raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
For the applicant.
No. Okay. Good morning. I'm Mary Solick, 121 South Orange Avenue, Suite 1500, Orlando, Florida. It's an early morning for me today. And I'm legal counsel for Vertex Development, who is the applicant on this application and the one that follows on your agenda. With me here today is Alan Ruiz, who is the principal of Vertex, back there, raise your hand, and Patrick Keane, who is the RF engineer for T-Mobile, and George Brusseau, who is the RF engineer for AT&amp;T, and Jennifer Frost, who is the project manager on this particular site, as well as Pastor Ernie, who is the, represents Vision Baptist, who is our landlord. You all have a difficult job in front of you today. You will earn every dime of that volunteer salary that you get for serving on this board.
You get two times this week.
I'm sorry?
You get twice as much this week.
Do you? Oh, good. Well, I'm glad to hear that. You have in your staff reports a pretty thorough analysis of the details of the application. This is a 120-foot stealth tower proposed on the Vision Baptist property, which is 4.4 acres in size. It is proposed as a flagpole tower, which means all of the antenna are internally mounted. You don't see anything but the pole and the flag. We meet, as your staff has provided, we meet all of the objective performance criteria in your code, such as setbacks, landscaping, fencing, all of those nitty-gritty details, those are all on the site plan that's in your package, and there's no dispute that we really meet, that we meet all of those provisions. What we have today is an issue about whether the special exception should be approved, and with the following application, the variance, to get us a 120-foot tower height. The proposed land use before you today, a wireless telecommunications tower, differs from most of the other land uses that come before you, because it's also governed by federal law and state law. You have a relatively new ordinance. It was adopted in 2015, and I understand this is the first tower to come through the city since the ordinance was adopted. And there is a recognition in that ordinance that there is interplay between local and federal and state law. I have, how am I getting to the next screen? Do I have? Okay. Just the, yes? Okay. I promise you, I'm not going to lecture you about your code, but there are a couple things I do want to lay out for you before you hear all of the presentations. This is the purpose and intent section of your tower code, and you have a number of items laid out, there are policies laid out in the first part of your wireless code, which dictate or framework what you're trying to do with your ordinance. And again, the first, I'm going to go through these. The first is to promote health, safety, and general welfare of the public by regulating the siting of wireless communications facilities. This is typical, what most jurisdictions do. Nobody lets us do whatever we want, wherever we want. The second is to minimize the impacts of wireless communication facilities on surrounding areas by establishing standards, which you've done in your code. Third is, is one of the purposes and goals of your ordinance is to accommodate the growing need and demand for wireless communication services. Four, provide for the location and co-location of wireless communications equipment on buildings. We're not proposing equipment on a building today, so that one is not particularly pertinent today. And here we go to the last six categories. Again, number five is for co-location on existing antenna support structures, and that's not at issue today. There are no existing antenna support structures within the search areas of the two providers that could support their communications facilities. The next one is to encourage coordination between providers. Seven is to protect the character, scale, stability, and aesthetic quality of your residential districts of the city by imposing certain reasonable restrictions on the placement of, oh, that relates to amateur radio antennas. That's not at issue today. Eight and nine are really the key things that I want you to think about as you hear everything today, and that is to respond to the policies embodied in the Telecommunications Act of 1996 in such a manner as to, A, not unreasonably discriminate between providers of functionally equivalent personal wireless service, or to prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting general personal wireless service in the city. That policy right there brings in the two main principles from the 1996 Telecom Act that are part of the overlay or the interplay between your ability to regulate land uses, regulate towers, and the Federal Telecom Act. And what the Telecom Act says, you get to regulate them, we don't take that away from you, but you can't do it in a way that unreasonably discriminates between equivalent providers, or in a way that prohibits or has the effect of prohibiting service. So the drafters of your code recognize that there was federal law at play, and they built it into your code. And then nine is establish predictable and balanced regulations governing the construction and location of towers. Ten, review procedures, that's really not at play today. And eleven is to require the timely removal. That's not at issue today either. So when you did your code in 2015, you developed pretty stringent location and height restrictions, but you built in a safety code. This is the next section of your code. You build in a safety net, and I've put that in red. So you're going to establish locations where they're permitted, and there's a chart in your code that says where they're permitted and at what heights. But at the end of that section, in the red, variances or deviations from the requirements of this division may be granted only in accordance with the requirements of Section 1425 for a variance. So that's kind of, that's the pop-off valve that allows you, again, to regulate, as you're allowed to do as the local land use authority, but keep yourselves in line with the Federal Telecom Act. So your code recognizes that there may be circumstances where you need to provide variances or deviations from your siting requirements.
Does the Telecom Act of 1996 inform us as to heights of towers?
No.
Or is it silent on that?
It's silent on that. That's a very good question. No, they, it says, it preserves local zoning authority. So they don't get into how you should regulate. They just say that you can't do those two things. You can't inhibit competition. I'm going to, and in a minute, I'm going to tell you what, how the case law has developed and how the FCC orders have developed. To interpret those two phrases to help you today. So I'm going to get to that in just a minute. So I just want to pop over to 41225. And this is one, you have to make one of these four findings in order to grant a variance or a deviation from the, from the siting requirements. And the first one is really the only one that pertains to the application at issue today, and that is the failure to grant the special exception would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. The second line there deals with public safety and emergency management communications. The third one relates to broadcast facilities. This is not a broadcast facility. You have a specific definition of broadcast facilities in your code. And the fourth one relates to amateur radio services, and this is not an amateur radio service today. So what does the phrase prohibit or have the effect of provision of personal wireless service mean? Federal case law and FCC guidance give us direction. And what it, the standard that has developed is the materially inhibit standard. Local government regulation constitutes an effective prohibition if it materially limits or inhibits the ability of any wireless provider to compete in a fair and balanced legal and regulatory environment. Sounds like a bunch of lawyers wrote that. They did. That's, that's the standard that's come from the case law and the judicial determinations of what it means to constitute an effective prohibition. We have FCC orders that help clarify that further, and the FCC, oh, go ahead, Mr. Kurlander.
Is it your position that there are providers, outside the providers, who would be positively affected? That there are other providers that would cause this discrimination? Because as, you have the four major providers in your application here, right? You're going to service them.
Well, we, today, today, we have commitments from, we have a commitment from T-Mobile to be the anchor tenant on the tower, and Mr. Brusseau is here from AT&amp;T. They have expressed interest in the tower. Do you have a formal commitment from them? You just, you do. So we have formal commitments from two providers. Mr. Ruiz and his company are committed to constructing the tower so that it is capable of supporting all four wireless carriers that are licensed in your marketplace, and those other two would be Verizon and Sprint. We've not had interest from them yet. But if the tower is up, and there is a mounting height or a rad center that works for their RF design, that facility would be available. We are required to submit a shared use plan as part of your code that says, we'll make that available to any carrier that wants to use the tower, and it, and it works for their design.
So is it your position that, that the law here, that AT&amp;T and T-Mobile would be adversely affected competitively as compared to Verizon and Sprint?
Um.
Where's the discrimination?
The discrimination is in.
How could you possibly be discriminated against?
Maybe I can help. Chairman Kurlander, the, I've had a number of these matters with the 1996 Telecommunications Act. Basically, the preemption that is provided for in there is to limit local government zoning authorities, saying, we're picking AT&amp;T over Verizon. We're choosing this provider over that provider. Oh, I don't like this service.
Right.
That, there's a form of discrimination. The other issue is you're not allowed to make, render decisions based on perceived health effects of radio frequencies. So there's, there's those limitations, and I believe the other one that you pointed out was the prohibiting services, which is making, making decisions with regards to tower locations that have the practical effect of limiting the actual ability of the engineering-wise to provide service. Those are the three, I think, relevant issues you need to consider that, from the telecommunication act, that, that adjust your decision outside of what the city code informs you.
So would it be accurate to say that the only one that really pertains here is the third one you said?
We haven't even got through the presentation of the applicant yet, so it depends on what, what issues come up during the presentation.
I, I see a number, I, I'll be honest, the effective prohibition claim is the stronger claim that we have today. But I don't know what Verizon's service looks like in this community. I've heard anecdotal evidence that Verizon's service is decent in the community. So if AT&amp;T and T-Mobile can't get in here to make improvements to their service, there may be an argument that there is a competitive issue. If you were only to approve this tower at 75 feet, I don't know whether either one of these carriers would use it at 75 feet. You'll have to ask them that question, but at 75 feet, it's a single-user tower, so somebody loses out. Somebody, one of these two that are at the table today would not be able to provide service from this location, because the height would be insufficient. And that would be another competitive issue raised by the proceedings today. But again, it depends on how all of this plays out. Have I answered your questions, or have we answered your questions together?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the FCC orders are a little bit more practical, and they give us a little bit more clarification on what the materially inhibit standard is. And the FCC guidance says that an effective prohibition occurs when a local requirement materially inhibits a provider's ability to engage in a variety of activities related to its provision of service. And it applies not only to filling in a coverage gap, but also when densifying a network, introducing new services, or otherwise improving service capabilities. So what the FCC is really saying is, the service provider's decisions about what its service looks like is what governs, not what the local government's idea of what their service should look like governs. Okay. So that's our regulatory framework. Your, your staff, you have six approval criteria in your code for special exceptions, and your staff is of the opinion that we don't meet four of them. And the very first one that they think we don't meet is that we're, that the staff's opinion is that we're already providing service, or providing adequate coverage, or adequate capacity in the geographic area. And their position is that because we already have some coverage in there, that's good enough, and so we don't meet that criteria. We would suggest that position deprives your constituents with badly needed coverage improvements and runs afoul of the Telecom Act by materially inhibiting the service provision by T-Mobile You also, we also contend that the staff position runs afoul of some Florida provisions. There is also Florida law that regulates wireless development, and that comes in the form of 365-172-13B1, Mr. Brusseau. And that limits local government review to land development or zoning issues. That statute does not allow you to evaluate our designed service unless we voluntarily offer that information. And then if we do offer that information, which we have volunteered in this particular case, you're limited to a review of a proposed height of a new tower as whether it's necessary to provide the provider's designed service. And designed service is a definition, is a term, it's defined under the code, and it's defined in the statute as the configuration and manner of deployment of service the wireless provider has designed for an area as part of its network. So what that statute says, if this is our designed service, and we provide proof that we need our height to meet that designed service, you evaluate whether we've provided that proof. You don't evaluate the quality of the service or the, the particular design, you just look to see whether we've proven that we need that height for our designed service. It really, yes?
I'm sorry, but is the designed service an arbitrary number, or is that set, is that a set number by different carriers? Or is that an arbitrary?
That is a very good question, and I think it's, the next point in my program was to point out the two RF engineering packets in your staff reports. It might be a good time for me to turn the podium over to the RF engineers and let you ask of them the questions they are qualified to answer instead of me. Does that sound like a good plan? Do you all have questions about the RF packages?
It's your presentation.
Okay.
Do the best you can.
Right. So before I call them up, both reports, both reports identify service deficiencies in the area. And both reports recognize that this is an area of your community that's being underserved, and they are prepared to make substantial financial commitments to improve the quality and reliability of their service to your constituents. The status quo to them is not good enough. Both of the engineers are here, and I'm going to call them up now to briefly discuss what their service needs are, how their service is designed, how it relates to their surrounding locations, and let you all ask whatever questions you have of them. I have a feeling you're more interested in talking to them.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's get Patrick up first. And I have your, do you want your report up here?
The first page is probably sufficient.
Oh, I might be able to read that. They have it in their staff reports, too.
Good morning. Patrick Keane, 1368 Northwest 86th Way, Coral Springs, Florida. I have been sworn in. I'm here today as a representative for T-Mobile. I work in the radio frequency engineering group. Our responsibilities include defining areas of the network that do not meet our service goals, and in proposing solutions to how we can solve those issues. Here today, we're talking about.
Are you here testifying as an expert?
I would consider myself, yes, to be an expert in this field.
Well, it's not for me to decide.
Well, I've been working in the industry, doing this.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
Whether or not you're testifying as an expert or just a general witness in favor of the project?
I'm an electrical engineer. I have 23 years of experience doing this type of work, determining network service deficiencies and proposing solutions. Prior to that, I received an electrical engineering degree from Rutgers University. And before that, I was a technician in the Navy. I worked on radar systems for six years. So I've been involved with radio frequency design, engineering, and technical aspects for close to 30 years.
And you're an employee of T-Mobile?
And I'm an employee of T-Mobile.
And how long have you been an employee of T-Mobile?
I've been an employee of T-Mobile for two years, but I've been working with the T-Mobile network team for 10 years.
And are you responsible for designing the T-Mobile network in this particular area of service?
Yes, myself and a team of engineers are responsible for the designs and planning for the entire South Florida market. Today, we're talking about a tower at the location which we propose to solve a coverage deficiencies in about a four-square-mile area, approximately located, it's Terry Street and Imperial Street intersection. If you look at the map on the left-hand side, the red dot in the center indicates the proposed tower, and the green dots surrounding it are the existing T-Mobile facilities. Now, one thing to notice is that there's eight, eight different facilities that currently serve this area of the network. That's usually not a good sign, because a mobile phone traveling in those areas will be trying to measure signals from all those different towers at one time, and it'll jump back and forth trying to find the best signal. So that's one indication of a service deficiency. In general, people using their phones here for voice calls and data sessions are not meeting T-Mobile's service goals, just in a very large area. And when I say T-Mobile service goals, some of the simple service goals we try to meet is certain power levels. What's the, what's the level of the signal at the ground when a person's using their phone? And like I said, there's about a four-square-mile area we're trying to improve here where the signal is poor, doesn't meet our service goals. Another service goal we might want to talk about, if you look at the lower, there's some, there's some metrics we include in the RF report we call, concerning what we call key performance indicators, or KPIs. It's measurements or calculations where we determine are, is the network meeting our service goals. And so the first one I mentioned was power levels, that's a simple one. And in the report, there's a couple more, it might be outside of the scope of this testimony unless you care to go through it. Some of the other KPIs or performance indicators, some of them include failed attempts. When you press your send button and the phone doesn't connect, or it takes a long time to connect, there's a delay. You don't hear any ringing for a little while. That's a, that's a service goal. We don't want any delay. We want you to connect right away. Users in these areas are experiencing failed attempts or delays in their calls. Another metric, I don't know if you want to continue, another metric might be dropped calls. So, and we have maps included in our report showing areas of deficiencies. So dropped calls is when you're talking on a phone, or you have a data session, and all of a sudden it just stops. Your phone, your conversation is gone. That's due to, in this area, that's mostly due to power levels that are too low, but also due to the fact that during network busy hours, the traffic tends to congregate around the towers, because the mobile phones that are closer towards the center of our service deficiencies don't have enough power to reach back to the tower, because the mobile phones are congregating near the towers. So it's another reason why you need to have a tower localized, is to pick up local traffic. And a local traffic here is going to be some major-minor roads, and most, but mostly residential. And that's another, another objective for T-Mobile, is to provide reliable indoor service. Now, people nowadays have the expectations to use their phones wherever they are, data sessions, phone calls, and that includes now indoor service. I'm sure many people have experienced where you can't use your phone unless you step outside or go to the window. Those are indications that you're not in an area that your phone call is meeting the service goals that we've set forth. So if we look at the, the maps up on, on the screen now, the map on the left is a predictive coverage plot. It shows the areas where green meaning reliable indoor service, yellow meaning reliable in-car service, and the orange is reliable outdoor service. So if you're in that orange area, it's a good chance you won't be able to use your phone indoors. Now, and then on the right-hand side, we now show the, the coverage in the right-hand map, will be at the tower. We've now improved services all, all within that residential area, and we've removed some of the, the poor service areas to the west. So from a radio network perspective, we need this tower to solve some of our performance issues that we're having, and.
We need it.
And in terms of the elevation, we determined that 120 feet is the minimum elevation that we need to, to meet our service requirements, and if we start going lower, lower heights, it depends on what's, what's the, you know, is it 25% lower, is it 30% lower? That can have an impact on the, on the coverage, the coverage radius of a tower. And once that hap, when you start talking about shrinking the coverage radius of a tower, you're now talking about adding another tower in the future. And this has happened in different parts of the network. We compromised and went for a lower antenna height on a tower, and two years later, we're back again in the same area trying to find, you know, we get funding for a new tower, we have to go spend it in this area again to, you know, buy the service.
So you pointed out earlier that there were eight service areas, I think you called them, or?
Eight, eight towers of eight facilities surrounding this area.
And that, that's a bad thing, because they're close together and the phones are picking up.
Well, it's actually, it's, they're too far apart. So the distance between the towers is five, six, seven miles. In an area with residential like this, the towers, towers should normally be a mile and a half, two miles at the most between each other?
You said something about the user would pick up signals from all of You said something about the user would pick up signals from all of them, and that would be bad, or?
Yes.
I understand that.
Yes, so what happens is a phone, so if I'm, if I'm using a phone right in the middle where we're proposing a tower, my phone's looking for the best signal. So sometimes, as I move around, even within 10 square feet, I'm taking a measurement on the tower to the north, and my phone's taking a measurement to the tower to the south, taking, so he's constantly making measurements. That's, that's, that's two things. One, that's, that's causing the phone to, the phone to be jumping around too much, and it's, it causes delays in the, in the service, but also it's, it's an indicator there's interference. There's too many signals coming in. So what you want is one strong signal to carry the calls in a local area.
And that strong signal is, is determined by a higher tower? Is that what we're, to gain that strength?
The, the elevation has an effect on the radius. So the taller the tower, the bigger the radius. So if, if we want a strong signal in a larger area, we need a taller tower. You know, we can go up and down, but you're talking about having a strong signal in a bigger or smaller area.
If you did not have this at 125, went to 75 feet, how many more towers would that require you to do to get the same result?
That's about a 30% reduction in the antenna height. You can roughly translate it to, I don't know, maybe one to two more towers in the next, north of here, and potentially fill in, fill in facilities to the west. So it's, it's hard to say without sitting down, you know, with a, with a proper analysis, but at least one, possibly two, to the north and maybe to the west.
Have you made all of the improvements to the surrounding locations that you can to improve service to this deficient area?
Yes, each of the towers has undergone some sort of structural and/or technology update in the past 10 years. So some of those improvements include adding lower, lower frequencies transmitters, which produce, they travel further, so it's like an extended range. We've also added capacity by adding more channels and, and more antennas and more transmitters. But, you know, after all this, all the time we've spent doing this, we've made service improvements, but it's, and it's measurable, but it's not sufficient. So, you know, we still, we still need to add a facility here in terms of our network coverage.
And all of those improvements are outlined on Appendix A of your report?
Uh, yes.
So, did you approach the applicant, or did the applicant approach you, if I may ask?
I don't recall in this circumstance.
The reason I'm asking is, did you, did T-Mobile go to any regulatory agency of the state or local government to say, hey, we have inadequate service? Have you ever done that?
I'm not aware, I'm, I'm more into technical things.
So this is the first time that, that you're actually voicing this concern about inadequate service? Is that fair to say?
In this particular community, or?
Relative to the situation we're talking about.
Well, back in 2017, we first identified this area as, as an area of concern. That's why we got funding for it. So since that time, at, you know, at least, or early, soon before that, we understood this area could be problematic. But this is the first time I've been in a, in a forum like this discussing it.
But have you complained about it to any, have you raised a concern?
To my manager, I mean, that's, that's what my job is, I mean-
But, but you've never raised a concern to any public authority?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
Can we talk a little bit about how your funding works and how you, you have-
While we're taking a little break here, I just want to point something out. This is two separate applications. One is the special exception, that is for the sighting of the, of the-
Right.
-of the tower. The second part of that is the variance in the height. I've sort of noticed with the, both the staff report and some of the questions, these two things have gotten co-mingled. If it's easier for everyone, and without objection from the applicant, we should just treat them as a single unified hearing, and then at the end, we can take two votes. I just want to make that clear on the record because it seems that we're bouncing back and forth a little bit.
Chairman, question?
While you're here, I need to ask, I hate to keep interrupting your presentation, but do you have any idea of how many mobile phones are added to your network on a monthly basis? Because that affects service, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so do we, is there anybody in the room perhaps that has knowledge? How much the network or the, the phones are adding to the problem, if I'll call it a problem, on a monthly basis?
I wouldn't know-
By all the carriers, I s-
I wouldn't know subscriber numbers, but I know that our data and our voice traffic increases, you know, quite a bit. I'm not, it's probably proprietary, but in terms of traffic, it's increasing all the time. It doesn't go away.
Of course. As landlines decline, mobile service increases.
Yes, and there's more applications, people are using their phones for more and more things now. I mean, it's, it's really sort of-
Correct.
-gone down the tracks.
The, what is, we're a flat plain here. No, we don't have any mountains, we don't have any hills, we don't really have many tall buildings in the center of town. So the signal travels in a, in a flat line, does it not?
For the most part.
Okay, so that we don't have any obstructions, is my question. How far does the, and that's based on power, I'm assuming, how far does the signal travel in this area from this proposed tower or any of the existing towers? Is that indicated on this, this map here?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Well, one, one point to make is that while we are, while South Florida is a flat environment, we do have some materials that are degrade signals. So for instance, concrete block construction, tile, barrel tile roofs, which is prevalent throughout all of South Florida, absorb radio signals quite, quite a bit. So you could be standing outside a building, you walk inside and, you know, you have a signal outdoors, you walk in a building, there's no signal because it, the signal stops at the cinder blocks or gets degraded quite a bit. Another thing that South Florida has a lot of is foliage. So relatively dense subtropical, these Australian pines, they absorb radio energy quite a bit. So if you have large stands of trees in an area, that's going to be an effective block of a signal. It's going to, it's not going to stop the signal, but it's going to degrade it. So those are two things that we do, are concerned about here in the South Florida market. Now, to go back and answer your question in terms of what kind of coverage we're going to get out of it, there's a figure eight on page eight of the T-Mobile RF engineering report, and you can make a comparison between the figure seven on the previous page-
I'll get them up on the screen so you can see them side by side.
And you can make a, you sort of make an estimate that when you add the tower at the dot, it adds about 0.75 to one mile worth of good reliable indoor coverage. And then if you look at the yellow, you're adding maybe all the way up to the far west side of that, the blue search ring, you're, that's, that's probably about a mile and a half. So 120-foot tower in this area with this sort of morphology, which is the type of residential and trees, we're getting about a three-quarters of a mile of reliable indoor coverage and a mile and a half worth of improvements in reliable in-car, and then probably about two miles to three miles of the, of the lesser coverage. So I don't know if that, sure if that answers your question or?
Generally, yes, it does. One more question, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
75-foot height versus 120-foot height, which is what you're requesting, 75, which is what we would normally allow. What is the difference in coverage on going up another 45 feet? Is that affected by that?
Absolutely. It's about a 30% increase in, in, in tower elevation. And a 35% increase in elevation transfers to the, to the radius.
By chance, do you have in your, I looked at a lot of maps here, but do you have a map or something that shows the difference between what 75 feet of coverage gives us versus 120 feet?
I definitely did that analysis. I didn't, I don't, I don't believe it's included in the report.
It's, um-
Actually, it's the initial RF report.
It is, okay.
Take a look at page five, guys.
What page?
Uh, the page five of the initial RF analysis report.
I don't have it in my PowerPoint. Sean, do you have it in yours?
I do, yes.
Do you want it up on the screen?
Yeah, yes, I've, I got a bunch of different reports here.
Then I'll have to, Sean, you'll have to-
I got you, don't worry.
Okay.
That'd be helpful.
Miss Winkle. So, can you guys see that adequately okay?
I don't, that's not the one.
Yeah.
I'll make it bigger here in a sec, just want to make sure that that came through clear.
It's in our packet?
It's in your packet, yes, sir, yes.
See if I can find it.
Yeah. So you guys are going to want to go to page?
Page five?
I would say page six.
Page six doesn't show much of anything.
So in your actual packet, if you guys want to go to, as your packet is numbered, not the report's number, but your packet numbering, go to page 47. That's going to provide you the initial RF analysis, and if you will thumb through that- It's going to be on pages 50 and 51 respectively. It's going to provide you with the existing was at their initial RF analysis, and provide you what the coverage would be at 75, 100, 125, and even 150 as well.
Can you move the screen to that?
Yes, I can.
Oh, 47, it says. Page 47?
Correct, yes, sir.
37 is the title.
No, it's not 47. Isn't that 47?
I got 48.
51.
50, 51. Yes, 47 starts the report, 50 and 51 are the pages that are going to give you the graphics you guys are looking for.
Can you go to the actual report?
Okay, so this is-
So I don't have the, the report itself, I just have, I just have those.
In the staff presentation, you don't have the agenda package?
I have the agenda package right here, and that's, yeah, that's pages 51.
We have, we have four on our-
Correct, yes, sir, yes.
You're showing three.
Yep.
Which one's not the right one?
Well, we would prefer that you be looking at the page that's-
At the packet?
And then the following page in your staff reports that actually gives you dimensions of the range.
That's, I mean, preferred, just because of the-
If I could read it. That's small.
I've got you.
Do you want me to try to pull it up on the webpage? Would that be better for you guys?
52?
52, yes, sir.
So it shows a 75-foot tower, 100-foot, 125-foot, and 150-foot?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
And the page prior to that is what the, the current existing conditions were again for their initial report.
You'd like to have 100-foot, 50-foot tower, ideally, right?
Well, that's what they asked for initially.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we have eight, eight towers surrounding this area, and the average tower height of those eight towers is 130 feet. So two of them are under 100 feet, the rest of the eight towers are over 120, 130, 130, 100. One of them's 210 feet, so there's, there's various tower heights in the area. And proposing 120-foot tower is, is within the network, surrounding network thresholds.
Are those other, excuse me, may I, may I question? Okay. Are those other towers flagpoles, or are they, they these sort of erector set lookings?
I have a list of them on page three of the latest RF reports, so there's, there's guide, it's a, it's a mix. There's flagpoles, guide towers, monopoles, self-support towers, it's a mix.
As technology changes, I assume that changes the design of the towers?
Yes.
Is that an assumption?
The, the tower that was being proposed here is a stealth tower, but there's some aspects of it which are newer due to the, the technology choices we have to make nowadays. So this, the map that's showing right now is, is the comparison plots that I did for the various antenna heights, starting at 75 in upper-left corner, 100 feet in the right upper-right, 125 lower-left, and then 150 lower-right. And it's difficult to see the, the changes, but it is obvious between 75 feet and 150 feet that there is a big difference. And then choosing which is sort of the optimal or the, the minimum requirement is, is a little tricky sometimes, and there's other methodologies we use to determine that. So one thing we try to look at is what's the cover, what's the area that's covered? And another thing we look at is what's the population count that gets covered? And based on those, you know, based on those types of analysis, we came up with a, you know, we need, we need 120-feet elevation to, is the minimum to meet our service requirements or service goals in this area. As the gentleman suggested, 150-foot tower would be better for us, it just gives us a little more coverage range, but as a minimum, we need 120.
Can I ask you a question about the general methods that you used in bringing you specifically to this site as opposed to any other site that might be in the Bonita Springs service area? Because I would submit probably that if one were to look at the entire Bonita Springs community, there are many areas that are underserved. I know of a couple myself. But when you look, what did you look at? And what system did you use to finally wind up looking and dealing with this specific site?
So we end up using a lot of different metrics or calculations to determine which areas to, that are most critical or most important for us. So simple things like what's the population, what's the population growth, how much traffic, road traffic there is each day, are there any major intersections or major highways nearby, are there hurricane shelters nearby, are there police stations, city halls? There's a lot of different things that go into saying, this, this, this area is important to us. And so I can't go to the specifics here why we chose Bonita Springs, but I know 2017 we started looking.
I seem to recall to Mr. Donnelly's point, in the presentation somewhere, that you struggled to find a site, and this was like one of a very few sites available. Do I have that right, or am I?
I'm going to bring Alan Ruiz up here, he's the principal of Vertex. Just the, the tower, the cellular wireless tower development has changed over the years. A lot of these towers were developed in the late, late 90s, early 2000s, and a lot of the carriers used to develop their own towers. Most of the carriers have decided these days that tower ownership and tower development is not their core business, and so there's been sort of a new industry of tower developers, vertical infrastructure builders. And that's what Vertex is, it's a vertical infrastructure builder. So Alan's going to come up and explain to you how, how, how it works when Patrick decides he's got a service deficiency, and how it gets to Alan, and how the site gets chosen, and back to you.
Are these private developers separate from the servicing companies?
Absolutely.
So it's a money game?
Yeah.
Good morning, Alan Ruiz of Vertex Development, and I have been sworn. Typically speaking, there are two different methods we use as a developer to figure out where towers need to go. We have various tools that show where existing towers are located, and different types of coverage and propagation maps that are available to us where we can look and see where a majority of the carriers have a deficiency. So as a tower developer, I'm not interested in building a tower for one tenant. I'm interested in building a tower that can handle the colocation of all of four major wireless providers. So whenever I look at an area, I'm looking for an area that multiple carriers have deficiencies. I can determine that on my own by using multiple tools that we have at our disposal to determine where there's a lack of towers, where there's a lack of coverage. But another method that we have is we're just told by the carriers, hey, we have a lack of service in this area. So a gentleman, I forget which gentleman, asked earlier, have you complained to anybody about the, this issue in the past? And what happens is, is that Patrick and his RF engineering team, they determine that there is a deficiency in a given area. He escalates it to his manager, his radio frequency manager. The radio frequency manager speaks with the real estate manager for T-Mobile. The real estate manager for T-Mobile is then tasked with finding either an existing structure to put their antennas on in a given area that they refer to as a search ring or a search area. And if there's no existing structure in that area at the needed height that can sustain the colocation of antennas, then they reach out to developers, and they say, hey, Alan, we have a real need here in the city of Bonita Springs, and- and, uh, they'll give us an actual set of coordinates. And then we'll take those coordinates, we'll draw a little circle around it, and we'll say, okay, this is our search area that we need to find a tower, or a place to put a tower on. Uh, when we go out there, our initial task is to make sure there aren't any existing towers, so we drive the area thoroughly to make sure there aren't any existing towers, or rooftops, or any other types of structures that can handle their antennas. Because frankly, I don't want to develop a site where there's already competition, there's no reason to. Um, once we determine there, there are no existing towers or structures, then we look at the land development code and try and understand how the tower ordinance works and, and where the best locations for a tower would be. Then we start reaching out in that search area to the landowners in that area that may be interested in leasing us some property. As you can imagine, in some cases, uh, you have one or two or three or four different people that might be interested in, in leasing some of their land. In some cases, you have people that are interested, but the location on the property doesn't meet the setbacks, and wherever you might meet the setbacks, they're not interested in allowing you to use that location. And so you kind of go back and forth with various candidates in that search area. And in this particular case, the only candidate that worked for us, that, that worked in terms of meeting setbacks, and that had an interest in leasing some land, uh, was Vision Baptist Church. So you, you kind of narrow it down, and, you know, I've done towers everywhere, from Homestead up to the Panhandle. I'm very familiar with Florida, and generally speaking, you don't get more than two or three candidates in a given area. And typically speaking, it's the one that says yes is the one that you go with, because if, you, you have to have a willing partner in, in the venture to, to move forward.
I'm gonna overlay on that, we, we, what he's just described in terms of the site acquisition process, we, we, we dub it BLZ. The site has to be buildable, it has to be leasable, that means we have to have a willing landlord, and it's gotta be zonable. And when you change your ordinance in 2015, you put some pretty stringent requirements in there. And one of them is the setback requirement. And even, this is, uh, this property has a future land use designation of medium-density residential, which means that we, we can only put a stealth tower in there, that's the only thing your, your code allows. And even though it's a stealth tower, we still have to meet the setback criteria for all towers. You have the same setback for, for every single type of tower in your code. And that setback is one-hundred percent of the tower height from all property lines. So when you think about it, you know, you read that setback, you know, you just gloss over it. But when you translate that into finding a property that works, a hundred-and-twenty-foot tower requires a hundred-and-twenty-foot setback from all four property lines. So that's a piece of property that's two-hundred-and-forty feet by two-hundred-and-forty feet. That's a one-point-three-acre parcel, and that's with the tower being in the very center. We don't normally get landlords who allow us to put the tower right in the center of the property and preclude any other use of their property. So, your code requirements are, require a fairly large piece of property, so that limits us a little bit. And again, this area is predominantly residential, a lot of single-family residential. So there aren't that many properties that would even qualify under the locational criteria under your code. This particular property, because of its size, four-point-four acres, allows us to put the tower and meet the setbacks. And actually, the southern portion of this property is encumbered by a, a gopher tortoise preserve, and there is a conservation easement on the southern portion of it, and that wooded area of the property is, will be forced to remain wooded. And we have located the tower right up against that wooded area, which allows us some additional buffering and screening of that tower to off-site uses. So when we found this property, and we, we looked at the code and we found this property, it was, it was a good site to us, because we had the advantage of onsite buffering and screening, a larger parcel size which helps absorb some of the visual impact of the tower onsite. It met all of the code requirements, and we had a willing landlord. And it was, um, in the search ring that met, uh, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T's requirements. Now, I want Alan to come back up here. Uh, initially, when the application was submitted, there wasn't any information submitted from AT&amp;T. That was a new development, and I want Alan to talk to you about what happens after he gets a lease and he has an anchor tenant, what happens in the process after that?
Once again, Alan Ruiz with Vertex Development. So as I mentioned before, we're in the business of building towers for multiple tenants. Once we have a ground lease in place, and an anchor tenant in place, and we start putting together our zoning application, we vigorously market the site to the other carriers. And because in an ideal world, we'd get a yes from all four carriers, and we'd have all four carriers as tenants on the tower. And so as we market the site, you start getting a little bit of interest, but hey, I don't have funding for this site, or, or, you know, maybe, maybe we can do that site and fund it in 2020 or 2021. And in this particular case, AT&amp;T, you know, they jumped all over it, right from the get-go. They had a very, very strong interest and very enthusiastic about going on the site, and almost immediately submitted an application to go on the tower.
Yeah, I have a question, you could explain, I thought I heard earlier that if that tower's a hundred-and-twenty feet, you can only take two providers within that tower? If it's a hundred feet or seventy-five feet, you can get four or more?
So, uh, this particular site that we're speaking of, the hundred-and-twenty-foot tower, will be designed and constructed if it's approved to, for the four carriers. Um, so it, it would be a case where you have T-Mobile at the top, AT&amp;T below that, and then you have two vacant spots below that for either Verizon or Sprint down the road. Now, not knowing what their needs are in terms of height requirements, those spots may or may not be in vain. I'm fairly certain a third level would work well for a carrier, I'm not sure about the fourth. However, the tower will be designed with the open spaces available on the tower.
Having said that, what if two of those carriers do a merger? Do they still require separate, uh, devices or whatever you, what do you call it, antennas?
Yes, sir. So, uh, great question, as I'm sure you've heard, that Sprint and T-Mobile are recently, have had approval from the Department of Justice and FCC to merge. And the answer is no, they would have just one set, they would have just one spot on the tower, and they'd have the equipment on that one level. Now, having said that, as part of that merger, the FCC has asked both of the companies to divest certain prepaid assets they have, such as like Boost Mobile and these other prepaid phone companies, and it's Dish Network, the satellite provider, that has, that is buying those assets. So immediately after this merger occurs, Dish will have approximately nine million subscribers. They also have been amassing frequency over the years at different FCC auctions, and they are in the process of beginning their launch as a data-only provider. They're starting out as 5G from the get-go with their network, so they look to be the fourth provider coming back to the network, to the marketplace, excuse me.
Dish Mobile?
Correct.
With cellular service or with satellite?
Cellular, yes, cellular and data service that is terrestrial-based off of the towers, not off of the satellite, satellite's totally different, that's for your TV set.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to bring the AT&amp;T engineer up, you have his report as well. Their, their system design is different than T-Mobile's, and their needs are a little bit different in this particular, um, area. And I think it would be helpful for you to hear what coverage, or what, um, system issues they're facing, because they're slightly different.
Uh, good morning, my name's George Bresso, I'm the principal engineer for AT&amp;T Mobility. I reside at seven-seven-seven Squire Drive in Wellington, Florida. I have about thirty years plus now as a principal engineer designing wide-area networks. My, uh, my first twelve years after graduating school and working for a consulting firm that was, um, supporting the FCC in the issuance of eight-hundred megahertz to start for both public safety and cellular. I did, um, a lot of turnkey, private radio projects for, um, large dispatch organizations like Florida Power and Light, Orlando Utilities, for county dispatch like Hillsborough County, Volusia County. I mean, I was the engineer that did the, uh, kind of proposal package with the coverage plots, and, and delivered the network, went out, did the acceptance testing, and then was responsible for getting the money and closing the project. And one thing that I learned along the way is coverage plots, as you see, the nice big blob, those are, uh, there's a simple model that's, um, been well-known for a long time. We used to use pencil and paper to draw the contours before laptops came around and all the pretty colors with, uh, the fancy video drivers we have today. But those, those models, um, are kind of built on a data set that a vehicle drives down the middle of the street with an antenna on the roof, collects data, and then the models are kind of tuned to represent that environment. You see the coverage blob out there, we go do our test in the same manner. We drive down the road, collect data, and we show, yep, it covers as far on the street as we show in this model. The radios go out there, uh, the usage starts to happen, and then the complaints start to come in. This thing doesn't work over here where the blob shows me, and that's simply because you're now in the clutter, you're not out on the street in the open space. So, that's, that's been the case for the last thirty-plus years. There's been a lot of development in, in modeling, and, and it looks really cool, and simulations and all this. But the basic treatment of the clutter layer has been the same. And for the South Florida area, it, it represents two problems, because like most, you know, we're flat terrain except for a few garbage dumps. So, the radio path is really from the antennas that are up in space through what's called free space, that's a well-known kind of lost scenario. Then it goes into this sponge of clutter, variable density clutter, based on whether it's a stand of trees, a residential area of houses, or whatever it is. Those are high variable differences that are not really captured in the model. And today, you know, these, uh, smartphones have, have become a real utility. It's not just a convenience to make calls where you want. So, the usage pattern is all over the place, and, um, extends beyond just the smartphone to like little cameras and different kind of devices, uh, in cars and everything else that, that are used in the network. So, the, um, customer experience is one that's been hard to show individuals like yourself, because, um, it wasn't readily available. To those of us who had the experience of going through the struggles of complaining customers and trying to find the solutions to get the money in the private space, it was, it was a learned experience and, and hard to share. In the past few years, we've, uh, gotten into this environment of big data, where we collect tons of data from everybody's phone that's driving around constantly. It's always been on the network, but we, we've, we're now able to collect it because we have the processing power and the memory spaces, and, and we're able to present it on a plot. We can, we can show the actual signal levels the phones are reporting, the signal quality that they're reporting, because all of the tower sites today, every antenna is transmitting the exact same channel at the same time, all the time. So, your, your actual experience is not just how strong the signal is, but whether it's strong enough to hear, and then whether it's a good enough equality to, to discern. You know, if you're in an auditorium full of people and they're all talking at the same volume, it's hard to hear what one guy says, because you have the interference aspects. You have to both have enough volume to hear, and then you have to have a clean enough signal to hear. So that's where you, you were hearing the one gentleman talk about, I got eight sites coming in, the phone's trying to make measurements, it's just in a pile of noise, and so you don't have a dominant scenario there. And we can kind of play games sometimes with, uh, reducing power and moving, but you're just shuffling the, the problem around. So there's, there's that coverage aspect where it's hard to present on a coverage map, because we're not gonna put out the real detailed view of where the calls are dropping and failing and no access and all this, because that's not a good picture. That's like the proprietary thing that's available to the engineers.
I forbid you let people...
But we put out the big blob, we put out the big blob of coverage and we stand up to it. And we sign the big FirstNet nationwide, uh, network, and it's got a coverage guarantee, and it's a signal level-driven thing, and we'll drive it, we'll meet it, and, you know, there'll probably be a lot of, uh, operators that, uh, find areas it doesn't quite work for them. Just like the, your nine-one-one dispatcher's talking to your, your Lee County as they run around. They find areas it doesn't work, and, you know, look at the blob, it works. So that's, that's one thing to keep in mind, is what you see is great for up and down the streets, and, uh, not so good for, for in the clutter, where most people use their phones. The other thing to, um, kind of consider is, the networks were, were put out in kind of, um, one-time launches. And when, when it comes to a public safety type thing like Lee County, those radio networks tend to live for twenty-plus years. And you get some big amount of money, you buy a new network, and you kind of keep it going for a while. The, the same kind of thing has happened in the cellular world, where, in this case, the Southwest Florida for AT&amp;T, I think we, we had an Erickson contract, and they did, they did their proposal, showed the big coverage blob, we bought it, a bunch of sites went into play. It covered on the street, and back in that day, usage wasn't very high. We had, um, more opportunity to use frequency planning to kind of control interference. Uh, over time, smartphones came out, we had to go to technologies that all channels operate at the same time on all towers, so interference became an issue. And the real, um, thing to consider is the amount of load on the networks. With the smartphones since two thousand and six to today, it's just an exponential curve. So from a, a provider's perspective, um, in terms of investing in the network, there's kind of two things that, that need to happen. One, you have to invest in all your sites, putting all the spectrum you can, all the radios, all the power, just to keep what you've got alive from collapsing. And once you hit a certain point where all your channels are in service, all the radio power, everything you can do is there, now you have to offload that, they're congesting, and as they congest, they kind of start to contract, and now everybody's starting to have problems all over the place, even in good signal conditions with, with plenty of signal level.
What is congestion?
Congestion is just where the, the load is beyond what the capacity is able to support. So, I mean, I made my transition from private radio to Bell South Mobility, and I've been the lead for, for Bell South Singular AT&amp;T now since the year two thousand, through 2G, 3G, 4G, now we're doing the 5G. And the money has been going to where the congestion is. So, my three counties over on the southeast coast are where I've built five-hundred sites in the last, you know, fifteen years. Over here, we've only built a couple sites in that time. But the usage is going up everywhere. So, every, every year, I have to kind of try to find opportunities to get money to make improvements that are needed in the network, and they're needed all over the place. They're needed for coverage improvement, so that people that are trying to use their phone and can't use it can get some service, and then it's needed to relieve the congestion that is existing all over the place. So for this area, it's kind of been a quiet area. We haven't invested a lot of money in new sites, because there's only so much money to go around. It goes to the real, you know, metropolitan areas where the congestion is extreme. Nowadays, we kind of have two plays going on. We have our typical new cell build, this macro tower with the antennas up in space on a tower. And then we have these small cells, which are, uh, you know, a little canister antenna, and a radio stuck on basically something that looks like a telephone pole. We run them up and down the streets, and we've got thousands of them in play in the States now. Those are little tiny footprints that just relieve the traffic that's on the street there. They don't do anything for the clutter space for the guy that doesn't have good service. So in the last couple of years, I've managed to get funding for actually three towers in, in this jurisdiction. This is the first one, I'm in front of you now, I'm working, but there are two others, because the problem extends all the way to the, to coastline. So I wanted to kind of give you the, the two points there, that the coverage blob is not indicative of what happens, you know, in the customer service, we have the, the actual customer experience view very clearly now, and it's all geocoded, I mean, your phone is constantly talking to the network. We're able to, uh, geocode it right to where it happens, and, uh, present all that stuff on a map, and I can see, oh yeah, you know, the coverage looks great like this here, but we're full of problems all in this area. So what I do is I say, okay, I need to solve that problem, and I petition the, the business every year. I have all these different areas that need help, and we go through a funding allocation, a ranking, and almost every year, the coverage gets taken off because we gotta address the capacity. So when I do get an opportunity to fund a new site for... So, when I do get an opportunity to fund a new site for capacity, I try to make the, the best I can with it to address the coverage problem as well as the capacity. So, that's, at this point, I do have three sites and I am working in this area, and wanted to get that out there, and your, your understanding of just the, the time sequence. We put a network out here, it's been sitting for a while, it's, it's hurting from the beginning, but it's gotten worse as more people come on, and, you know, the usage expectation is greater. I want to use the phone everywhere I'm at, not just go stand in the street and step outside the house. And we have Wi-Fi calling in some cases to help inside the house to offload. Doesn't necessarily work with all Wi-Fi, doesn't help everybody because as soon as you walk outside your house and next to the bushes, it's gone. So, I wanted to get that out there, and then I also wanted to, to say, feel free to ask me any question you asked of the other guy, I may give you a different answer, maybe a little different way, but shoot, what, what you got?
I have a quick question. Capacity and range that you talked about that are stumble blocks.
Capacity is, is the number of concurrent calls, the number of.
I understand that. The difference between 120-foot and 100-foot and 75-foot height, are both of those problems enhanced by more height or is it the range?
Well, more, more height is going to give you a better radio angle into the clutter. As you start to get down to the clutter height, like at 75 feet, somebody starts talking about 75 feet, you're down near the clutter height. You're, you're, you don't have this nice free space area that the, the signal can go some distance and then go into the clutter and try to do something. So, you're starting your loss out right away. So, your, your footprint is going to be very contained in that, in that regard. As you get higher up, you, you get that angle down.
As enhanced, it, it's diminished then.
Yeah, the lower you go, the, the less you can do with that site. It becomes something that's a very small contain, it's going to help the, the very small area there. As you get up above the clutter and now the radio signal gets to travel some distance before it goes in the clutter, now the effective dominant range of that cell increases. But also, the, the interference play between all the towers also increases. So, it's, it's, there's kind of this balance that you have to try to, to do the best you can with. You need to have the sites there to provide the, the signal level and, and the, the best quality you can to, to serve where you don't have good service today.
Counselor?
Yes.
I think that we're sympathetic to, to the issue, to the substantive issue. We, however, are bound by the law of the city. We have to operate to grant a special exception. We have to make very specific findings. Could you address how your application fits the criteria?
Yeah, I'm trying to clarify.
You get a special exception.
Because we're combining these, these two hearings, you have six primary criteria for the special exception for the sighting of the tower, and that's, those are those contained in Section 4-1219. At this time, the staff report would indicate that they feel they don't, they failed to meet the first, fourth, and fifth criteria, but staff will go into that during their presentation. And then you must meet one of the four criteria under Section 4-1225 for the broadcast antenna. And then for the variance, there'll be an additional five criteria as said forth in Section 4-131. So, if you want to like look at those and bullet point.
My question relates to the.
Okay, I'm going to, right now, just the special exception.
Please.
Okay. And it was, you have six criteria, there's only three that really are at issue between the applicant and the staff. So, I'm, with your permission, would just address those three. And the first one is that the staff's position is that we're not, we have to demonstrate that we're not already providing adequate coverage or adequate capacity in the geographic search area. You've just heard at length from T-Mobile and AT&amp;T that they are not providing adequate coverage or capacity in the geographic search area. I think that evidence is uncontroverted. We, the, the third criteria, or the second criteria the staff has said we don't meet is that the, let me get the full criteria for you. The staff's position is we don't, that we could impact or diminish property values. That's, that's the staff's viewpoint. And the, there's been no evidence in the record of that. We are utilizing a camouflage facility. You have a photo simulation analysis in your package that demonstrates what the view of the tower is like from off-site vistas. When you look at that photo sim, to the south and to the east, the tower is not visible from off-site uses. And again, that's because we were able to take advantage of the large 4.4 acre parcel size. The uses to the south and to the east, the, the properties to the south and east are very large properties, and they are heavily treed, and they are developed with pseudo-institutional uses. Another factor that supports the, in our view, the excellent sighting of this tower within the search area, we were able to take advantage of off-site more institutional uses instead of the traditional single-family residential uses in the neighborhood. I've been doing this work for, since the late 90s. We have commissioned appraisal reports done in other communities to determine the impact of cell tower values on property values, and we have yet, and they, the appraisers do that by analyzing sales of homes and subdivisions before a tower goes up and after a tower goes up to, and, and neutralize for all other variables to determine whether there's, whether they can isolate any impact on value. And I've never seen a study come out that, that isolates a negative impact on property values. And now we're starting to see anecdotal evidence that proximity to reliable wireless service is an asset to residential home values, and that people want to be where their service is good. They don't want to have landlines anymore, they want reliable service, they've got, you know, they've got eight devices in the house that rely on wireless service. So, we're starting to see the trend go the other way. And I've yet to see a property appraiser in the state of Florida adjust an assessment to a home value based on its proximity to a cell tower. So, we don't think there is any impact, we, we've utilized a camouflage application, first of all, which minimizes the, the tower. It, it's a stealth application. So, there is the first thing we've done to minimize the impact, and there's really no evidence in the record that, that it could diminish property values. And then the last criteria the staff says that we've not met is that we haven't done everything to implement all reasonable impacts to the property. And again, the same thing I've just mentioned, we're using a camouflage or a stealth application, a large parcel, it's heavily wooded, the surrounding uses to the south and to the east are semi-institutional, helps buffer that neighborhood. The staff suggests that there are alternative locations that are higher up in the hierarchy, and that there might be a better place. I think that's a red herring argument, given the, the primary residential development of this community, there are just.
Is that in the staff report?
The staff in their report mentions that the hierarchy has not been met. There are, let me get my two maps here.
Let me see that.
There, here we go. So, this map, the red represents, this is your future land use map, the red represents the T-Mobile search area, the red polygon. The blue, almost rectangular polygon in the center is the AT&amp;T search ring. And the only other future land use designations that are higher to our medium-density residential are the, the red properties, the commercial properties. And you see, it's very, very limited as to what there is. There's just a little bit off to the west and then to the east, and this map shows those commercial areas overlaid on a aerial of your community. The, I looked at the commercial properties that are over by I-75, and they're not large enough to meet setbacks, and they, I, I think the RF guys would tell you that they're too close to the tower locations on the east side of 75, that would, they would be, they would interfere. And then over to the west, there's just a limited amount of commercial over there, and the properties on the north side of Old 41 are, are not sufficient in size to meet the setbacks for 120-foot tower. And that little yellow pin that's on that map represents an FPL tower that's located there. It's a short tower, I think it's only 90 feet, and Verizon is on that tower, and both of the carriers have looked at that tower, and they have both put in their reports that they looked at that, that tower and analyzed it, and it was not of sufficient height or in the sufficient location to meet their service needs. So, staff's objection to our tower is its off-site impact. And in addition to those properties not really being feasible from your code requirements, the off-site impact of those locations is really the same. There's residential communities around all of these towers. So, it really doesn't make any difference where you go in these search areas, you have an off-site residential impact. It's no, those sites aren't any better in terms of residential impact than the one we've chosen, and I would submit that the one we've chosen is better, given the large size of the parcel and the institutional uses that are to the south and to the east. So, that's the special exception criteria, and then you have to make one of those four findings in 1225. And the first, the first one is really the only one that applies to this type of tower, and that is the failure to grant the special exception would have the, would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. These two RF engineers have submitted reports to you, and they have testified today, that AT&amp;T needs 95 feet to meet their coverage objective, T-Mobile needs 120 to meet their coverage objective. A 75-foot height limitation does not, first of all, it makes it a single, single-user tower, and you can ask both of them whether either one of them would use a 75-foot tower or whether those resources would just get pulled and go somewhere else. And if you want me to bring them up here and ask them that, I'm happy to do it, but it's our position that a 75-foot height is, has the effect of limiting the provision of wireless services to a community. It certainly would eliminate one user and more than likely would eliminate both. Do you want to hear from them on the 75 feet?
It's your witness.
Okay.
It's your case.
George? Would you use 75 feet?
No, sir, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Change of plan.
Patrick, does 75 feet meet your design objective?
Once again, Patrick, keep, 75 feet would not meet our design objectives for this area.
I have a question for both of them. How about 100 feet?
We did an announce of 100 feet, it didn't quite meet the, the performance characteristics we, we, we intended for the area, so, so, no.
But 100, 100-foot rad center for him puts him at a rad center of 82.
Is there stack?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's one thing I'd like to point out is this stealth tower that, that came out, you know, in the early 2000s, everybody got excited because they're not going to see the big open array. That's detrimental to the network provider. I mean, nowadays, you know, you just think about that, you got this little space, wherever you, you put one antenna, your other two are forced to go on, on whatever 120 azimuth from that. So, you're constrained on where you can direct your signal, you're prevented from putting your radio gear right up there, connected to the antenna with, with a lot of connections, which is where we're, we're at and going today. So, in general, it may have been a, a good visual idea from that perspective, but it's one of the last choices that we would make as engineers for a facility. Our first choice is open array where we were able to do what we can do.
To follow up on that question, on a 75-foot tower, AT&amp;T being on the bottom tier, however you phrase it, you would be down considerably?
I can tell you that I wouldn't even go with 75. I would not go with 75 on this tower.
Another, and I have seen towers that look like trees, pine, I guess pine trees. How, how do those compare to the flagpole towers?
I prefer a pine tree over a flagpole every day.
Really?
You can put multiple antennas up on the same level, you can get different asthmus, you can put your radio gear up there. I mean, that's, that's in the hierarchy of things. You know, it's, it's a more expensive solution from developers' perspective, but from an engineering perspective, it's a much better solution than a flag.
That begs me to ask the question, why is the flagpole tower being proposed as opposed to the pine tree?
Because it's cheaper.
Well, I understand that, but in the grand scheme of things.
Because you have a definite, because we're required to do a stealth tower here, under your code, and you have a definition of stealth. And a stealth facility must have or appear to have a concealing or separate function, including but not limited to the following: church steeple, bell tower, spire, clock tower, cupola, light standard, flagpole with a flag.
Was the code, was the code written prior to the availability of these?
No, it was 2015 the code was written.
No, we've been doing pine trees for, and the other thing I would point out to you in your, your, your code needs, there's a lot of cleanup that needs to be done in this code. There is.
That's another story.
Yeah.
I'll take any advice necessary.
Well, you have in your, your, in the chart in the code, the land use table that identifies the tower type, you actually, in residential, you have stealth and camouflaged. Under commercial, stealth, camouflaged, and monopole. Industrial, stealth, camouflaged, monopole. But you don't have a definition of camouflage anywhere in the code. There is no other reference in the code to camouflage. You have a definition of stealth. I don't know what you think a camouflage tower is. We, we use those terms interchangeably, but you use both of them, so I don't know what the intent was, but there's no definition of camouflage. We would consider a pine tree to be a camouflage tower.
Can I make a comment here? Because I think what I keep hearing here is the problem is with the law. And the variance, if this is going to be every prob, every time you want to put a tower in our community, you're going to have to come back and get a variance. That's not the role of this board. We apply the law. It seems to me what you're looking for is a change in the law, and that's a very legitimate thing to look for, but that's the responsibility of the council, not the zoning board. And I, I can't see that giving a variance in this case is going to be anything other than giving a variance from now on. That's not the point of variances, it's a unique and different situation. This, you're telling me as I listen, is going to be the norm from now on. So, I have a problem there.
Well, and I understand that, and you've raised a legitimate point, but I, I would say to you that the law is not working very well for you, and it's not working very well for the wireless industry.
But we're not the body to make that argument.
Right, right, right. But your, and that's why I went through that presentation in the beginning, is your law contemplates variances and deviations. It, it's built into there, and it's your safety valve, it's your pop-off to keep you in compliance with the Telecom Act. So, this is a land use that's different than other, it's, this is not your typical pool setback variance issue. This is, this is the unique intersection of local government regulation of towers and the overlay of federal law. So, I think the situation's a little bit different, but I understand your frustration.
It, it is unique only in that you're the first one to come with a new, new technology that says we need different law, and if we need different law, and it sounds to me like what you're saying, we do need to address this, but I don't think that's what we can do. It's not the role that we have here. And if, if we use the variance to correct the law, we're not doing what we're supposed to as a zoning board, and I think that's what I'm hearing you want. You want us to, to make, make better a law that we have that needs to be changed, and that's the role of the council, and I think that's where you need to take your.
I hear your discomfort, but I would assert that your code gives you the ability to do that. The specific language in your tower code allows you to approve variances, and it tells you what you have, the finding you have to make in 1225 to do that, and that's what I was just getting ready to address, which was that there is a prohibition of service. And that's the one finding you have to make to approve the variance, and that's, it's right there in your code on that deviation section, you have to make one of those findings in 1225. Your variance criteria, there's an argument to be made that your general variance criteria don't apply also because your code set, your tower code refers you to. don't apply also because your code set, your tower code refers you to, um, to, two sections of the code that don't have anything to do with variances. But it, it refers you to one section that doesn't exist anymore and then it refers you to another section that does not contain the variance criteria. But I will go through your variance criteria.
Why don't, why don't you start with the definition of a variance in our code? I believe it's section two or-
Well, real quick, just not to complicate things further, but we actually do have a definition of camouflage in the code. It's, it's in the definitions for that section. It just doesn't say that under C. "Antenna-supporting structure, comma, camouflage means an antenna-supporting structure that is disguised to visually blend into the surrounding area or infrastructure, such as a tree or architectural building feature."
Thank you. So we allow it?
We do. But it was, I, I think the definition of camouflage was camouflaged within the definitions because it didn't-
All right, well, I read, because you have a different definition of wireless facility, which is your tower, so you really, then you're saying you have two definitions for antenna-supporting structures.
It's in the, it's in the antenna section.
Right, it's, but it's not in the tower section, it's in antennas. So, well, anyway, variances. Let's go through the variance criteria that are in four-one-three-one that are not referenced in your tower code. It references a different section. "You have to consider whether there are exceptional or extraordinary conditions or circumstances which are inherent in the land, the structure, or the building involved." There are extraordinary conditions or circumstances which are inherent in the structure involved. Cell towers are inherently tall structures. We can't make them short. We can't make them invisible. We can't change the science of how they work. That's how the radio frequency signal transmits, by height. So there is something unique or extraordinary about the use that you are discussing. No other use in the medium-density residential future land use category has such specific locational limitations. Residential uses can go anywhere. They're not dictated by radio frequency signal transmission. They're not dictated by willing landlords. They're not dictated by the science or the network design. That's the first criteria. The second one is that I, we have to establish there's no evidence of the actions of the applicant or the wireless users subsequent to the ordinance modification are at play here. All of the surrounding sites of T-Mobile and AT&amp;T were built prior to the adoption of your ordinance. The physical location of those surrounding sites is part of what dictates or part of what creates the hole in the coverage. So the network, the surrounding network developed prior to your ordinance modification. So there isn't anything that we've done since then that we feel would put us in violation of that specific criteria. The third is that it must be the minimum variance requested. You heard T-Mobile, they really want one-fifty. We said, "Sorry, guys, love you, but we're not going to be able to get one-fifty." We told them to go back and take a look. They came back. One-twenty is the bottom line. AT&amp;T, their bottom line is ninety-five. That happens to work with those two carriers on that. But if AT&amp;T had come back and said our bottom line is one-ten, I can't put two carriers at the same height. It doesn't work. A seventy-five-foot tower would be a single carrier pole. And you've heard evidence that it would not be a usable facility for each, either one of these carriers. And it would knock somebody out of the loop. The reports that have been submitted to you from T-Mobile and AT&amp;T indicate that they would need at least two poles, two seventy-five-foot poles each, to cover what one would do. So you double the costs for everybody. You double the aesthetic impact on your community. And that's per carrier. If you talk about four carriers out there, you just keep multiplying. The last, the next criteria, it's not injurious to the neighborhood. The stealth application indicates that it's not visible from the south and to the east. So we've, we've been able to minimize the aesthetic impact. A, a, a large portion of the aesthetic impact of the tower from off-site uses. It will, we didn't talk about this much today, but it will improve public health, safety, and welfare in your community by providing reliable, continuous cellphone coverage to your community, including reliable nine-one-one coverage. And this is not, this will not, I don't think this will be a recurring area. You have a small, a recurring issue. You have a small community. This is the first tower that's come in since two thousand fifteen, when your ordinance was adopted, getting close to two-twenty, twenty-twenty. So this has not been an issue that you've been inundated with. And the four carrier, if you approved a one-twenty-foot tower today, you would be taking care of two carriers, possibly a third. The cheapest, fastest way for a carrier to get on air is to hang antenna on an existing tower. So the next carrier might find, you know, you might have, the Verizon of the world might come in and find money. If the, if the, if the stick's in the air, they might find the money to come in and locate on that third carrier, on that third level. And you'd have another competitor providing service to your, your community.
Could I ask you a question here? Are you saying that it is unlikely to, very unlikely, that we would not have down the line in the next year or two or three a request from a cellular tower to build another cellular tower somewhere in Bonita Springs?
I'm not saying that. I don't think it's going to be recur, I think it's going to be a limited issue.
Well-
And it hasn't been a recurring issue till now.
Well, I guess one of the reasons it hasn't been a recurring issue is this is a developing problem as more and more use of the cellular network happens. So that I don't think we're going to have less and less or make this be the sort of top level of the same. So I see it as recurring. And so the, the issue I have, and, and I'm, I'm not opposed to having good cellular service, A, number one. But if, I have to believe that in two thousand and fifteen, when the legislative body of the city of Bonita Springs made this rule, that they were quite aware that cellular, your tow, cellular towers had to be tall. So if they wanted to make an exception in the law to say, "Our seventy-five-foot maximum height will not apply to cellular towers. We will allow those particular things to be taller," they were quite competent to make such a decision. Having not made such a decision and having said seventy-five feet is our limit, then it seems to me the variance has to be used because there's something unique to this particular case. And what I'm hearing is that all cellular towers have to be tall. There are likely to be more of them. And that that kind of a decision, that we want to have our seventy-five-foot maximum height not apply there, is one that should be a legislative decision. And I haven't, you know, to say that this is somehow inherently unique to this particular application seems to me to ignore the fact that every single cellular tower in the future is going to have a single, similar problem. And though I think you may have an incredibly strong argument for why the law should change, I don't think it fits, in my mind anyway, the reason to grant a variance. That's where, that's where my issue falls down.
So at this time, if, if we could, I'd like to take a ten-minute recess. We will reconvene at ten fifty.
Okay.
At which time can somebody from the applicant or the city put up a definition of variance as it is in the code?
I don't know if, if the applicants finished the-
No, no, I, I assume they're not finished. But they, they'll, they'll have the ability to go forward when we come back. So with that, we're in recess until ten fifty. Thank you.
Hey, Larry.
I told you all you're going to earn your keep today. You asked me about the variance definition and your staff was kind enough to put it up. And a variance from a structure height is allowed. And variances are specifically discussed in your tower code. And you are allowed to approve them to the citing requirements in the code. But you have to meet, you have to make one of those four findings that's in 12, 412-25. And that is the one I've referenced before. The failure to grant the variance special exception would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. So, in my opinion, you do, your code specifically contemplates that there will be variance requests to the citing and locational requirements of your code. Your code specifically addresses structure height as an allowable variance. And your tower code gives you the criteria that you are supposed to use to evaluate it. So, in my opinion, you have the power to do what we are asking you to do today. You have the authority. I understand your discomfort. But that power and that authority in your tower code is what keeps you in line with the Federal Telecom Act. Do you have any further questions? I'm ready to sit down and let your staff talk to you. Do you have any further questions for me or any of members of our team?
There are none at this point. We may have additional questions later. You'll have an opportunity to say something else after the city. So, is your case in chief now closed? Okay. For the city, please.
Just one second, sir. Special counsel Spain, are you still with us?
I am, Mr. Gibbons, yes.
Anything they don't charge by the Bennett for long distance.
Right.
Chairman, do you want me to leave this up here for now? Or would you like me to continue with the PowerPoint?
No, everybody's had an opportunity to look at it. You can take it off.
Do you agree with what you're saying? Do we have the power to, about the height restriction variance?
Oh, I want to hear from the lawyer on that. As I understand, I don't want to preclude you from saying anything you want to say, but basically you are recommending denial of the special exception.
As requested, yes, sir.
And denial of the variance.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Now, why don't you concentrate your presentation on the areas of disagreement?
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, I won't waste guys with too much extra additional information. I'll go through just some graphics to show you kind of where we're going to formulate our argument and we'll go from there. Again, so copy of the request. You guys have information about what the requests are, variance special exception, just general information about the site and its history, land use zoning, acreage, current building, about 4,000 square feet plus or minus. The idea is to propose a cell tower for a multi-tenant facility. And it's going to be a tower total lease space, the entire compound for the tower of plus or minus 2,500 square feet. So, location map, again, most of you know where this area is, so I won't bore you with that too much. It's the area that's highlighted on the screen right now. Just kind of a snapshot of the surrounding land uses, something that actually the app they get pointed out as well, you kind of are sitting in a sea of residential there. So, majority of adjacent lanes is our residential in nature. There are some commercial and mixed-use ones a little further out in the peripherals. Current zoning designations, again, they covered most of these already, are highly residential. There's agricultural zoning, but that does allow for primary residential uses. Principials at hand, there are three major issues we're going to be talking about here. Obviously, again, the first one's going to be relocation of the facility, so putting a wireless facility within a residential land use classification, as well as the height itself and potential compatibility uses with the height of the proposed structure in the variance special exception. This was the infamous chart we were speaking about earlier, in case you guys haven't had a chance to see that yet. And I apologize, it's a little bit smaller than I had hoped, but I wanted to give you guys the entire chart. That's actually Table 4-1221 of the Land Development Code, which sets the standards for different types of towers, citing criteria and obviously heights. So, again, what is allowed, what type of higher and what type of land use allows that type of tower. You're dealing with a residential land use classification, which does allow for stealth and camouflage towers. Staff can cruise administratively if they're under 35 feet. Anything over that goes to you for a special exception, which is up to 75. Anything over that, a variance. You guys already know all of this. Quick graphic of the site plan compound with a detail of the proposed tower height and a kind of general mockup of what the buffering may or may not be looking like in terms of the buffering requirements for the site. Again, just want to kind of put you out where they would have the general layout for the different antennas within the supporting structure. Photo simulation, so again, one of the things that we kind of mentioned previously, took a series of eight photos, as the applicant had mentioned, largely from the south and the east. There is not a whole lot of visual issue, however, from the other two directions, you can see there is going to be some type of visual impact. This is from the Terry Street right of way, from the adjacent Eden Rock community, a little further across the street on the other side, and on the back portion of the property. So, again, you can see there is some visual impact from the power pole. 120 feet in height is above and beyond the code requirement, so again, that would require both approval of the special and the variance for that to be allowed. Beginning to meet here a little bit. So, the RF report, the initial one, the one I kind of spent a lot of time looking at, it shows the four locations for the potential tower heights, so the existing and proposed. And again, the four separate heights are 75, 100, and 125. I'll go back a slide again very quickly for you guys. Again, you may have mentioned you'd saw where they had the additional eight tower locations, which is kind of creating some of the clutter problem, but also did provide opportunities for the applicant prior to this to go in and do some upgrades, which they have done. If we take a second to look at that again. One of the staff's biggest arguments is that there actually currently exists average coverage by the document, the RF report produced by the applicant. So, average coverage is currently being provided by large to that service area. Depending on the tower height, you do see an increase in the quality of that coverage from average to good. And depending on the height of that tower, that increases further and further. The other thing we want to note too are the two pods of red, again, that show the weakest signal levels, that show the poorest coverage quality. An increase in the tower height does have a proportional increase to affecting those areas, but it is not as extensive as within the group area, i.e. the service kind of cone that they had initially, the cluster area that they wanted to see the improvements within. So, a 75-foot tower would provide some level of improvement to the adjacent area immediately surrounding the tower, which, again, was primarily the area concerning with the service area denied by the service ring. Radio tower frequency report continued. Guys, take a look. Again, that provides the tower heights of the adjacent towers. There's some questions asked about what type of tower heights exist and where they're located. There is a monopole that is relatively close to that one, that's 91 feet. There's also a 95-foot flagpole. On the majority of them though, are going to be, again, guy wire or self-supporting towers. Some of them require more larger traditional style cell towers you guys are more accustomed to seeing. Special subapproval criteria for a wireless facility. This is kind of where we talked about, again, where staff is having some issues in terms of, does the applicant, does the proposed application meet the criteria for this? Is staff's opinion that the applicant was not able, is currently able to provide sustainable average service signal to the adjacent areas? So, there is some level of signal provided. Could it be improved? Yes. Could a tower of a lower height than was suggested possibly provide that? It could, based upon the documentation provided by the applicant. Would increase it to their desired height to allow for multiple tenant occupancy? It probably will not. But that doesn't necessarily prohibit them providing additional service or quality, just a matter of how extensive that quality is. The applicant has made no mention, again, of utilizing existing communication facilities, sites, in rather network provider, or without repeaters. They actually provided a additional report supplementing that since then, that it showed that they have done upgrades to adjacent towers in the vicinity. However, could more be done, could additional LT requirements be provided? That wasn't spelt out directly in some of the applicant's documentation. The applicant is not implementing all reasonable measures to mitigate the potential adverse impacts of the structures and facilities. Again, as the excessive tower height would potentially have negative impact on adjacent properties, during the neighborhood meetings we had, there were some issues and concerns from adjacent property owners, that there would be visual and auditory impacts from having it there, be it the generator, be it simply the sound of the flagpole, again, be it diminished view, there were concerns about property values raised by various individuals that attended the neighborhood meetings. Those minutes are also provided within your package as backup. There is specific criteria for granting a special exception. Again, the applicant already reviewed all of that, I think they went over that pretty clearly, so not waste your time with that. Compatibility issues in that regard. Again, the requested 120-foot height seems to be incompatible with the adjacent land uses and current use of that property. Again, most of your actual height is capped out at 35 feet for a lot of those institutions, which is why, again, the code itself was structured that way. When the 2015 ordinance was initially written, it was council's purview actually to try to gear towards more frequent but lower height towers. They wanted to minimize visual impact. I think a part of that was kind of anticipating the advent of 5G, but also a portion of that as well was, again, how do we minimize visual impact to neighborhoods in a larger residential area like the Nida Springs? In terms of environmental considerations, the applicant was very good about relocating the tower once they were aware of the Zurich oak habitat and the Gophers Preserve. So, they were very quick and, again, augmenting their site plans to take that, any type of infrastructure for the tower out of that area, so no proposed impacts to the environment are currently identified by us or the applicant. As far as traffic considerations, again, it's not an active use per se, so again, there will be no traffic impacts. We did have some comprehensive plan consideration concerns, but they are primarily geared, again, towards height, land use classification, compatibility. So, again, height of the tower, where it is being located, are there adjacent uses or adjacent land use classifications within the general par view of the documents that would somehow offer a better opportunity for citing or be more compatible? Again, finding conclusions for the special exception. So, again, as requested, you know, we find that it is not necessarily consistent, as the applicant has requested the special exception, with our goals, objectives, and policies or the intent of the need of plan. It does not necessarily meet all the applicable format standards, the locational standards set forth for the issues. So, we had an issue with that as well, again. Spelt out pretty clearly in terms of height and restrictions for what you can and cannot do in that land use classification. Again, it should not adversely impact the environment or critical areas. We see no issue with that whatsoever. It is not necessarily compatible with existing planned uses or surrounding uses. Again, this is more of a, well, to say passive, a commercialized use in a residential area. And again, we do have concerns for compatibility in terms of height. We think that it may have a potential adverse effect on surrounding properties, and...
What evidence do you have of that? That it has an adverse, you mean, you, that's a conclusion. Where's the evidence?
Based upon what we have seen from the neighborhood turnout from neighborhood meetings and from basically this general discussion with community members, there was a distinct concern that, again, property values might necessarily be impacted, but it would provide some level of disconcern if they wanted to sell or potentially lease out a home or rent out of homes and to that effect. There were concerns raised by the community.
Pretty weak. Did you...
Yes, sir.
Was there a professional opinion given on that or is it just general consensus?
There was no consensus of the community.
Pardon?
There was general consensus. Yes, sir. And again, it will not be compliance with the general zoning provisions, supplemental district regulations pertaining to the uses set forth in the Land Development Code, so... Kicking over, conclusions for the variance. The applicant did a very good job, I think, trying to tee up the argument that, again, the cell tower in and of itself, based upon the use, based upon the needs, based upon what it is, would necessitate a special or extreme or extenuating circumstance. Staff's recommendation is not to say they cannot have that use there. Staff's recommendation is not to simply say we don't want to see it there. It's simply saying that we would like to have them can meet and abide by the regulations of the LDC. Again, does not provide, again, that exceptional circumstance. It would essentially, did not demonstrate, they did not demonstrate that, again, that's the minimum height required. Based upon the documents they provided to staff, it suggests that a 75-foot tower would provide some level of relief, suggests that a 100-foot tower would provide some level of relief. And depending on the different RF report from the different operator, those heights tend to vary. One of the staff's questions was essentially that is it an issue that we are needing that height or that height has been marketed and is what those different entities are suddenly need because that's what they feel they can get? And again, the granting of the variance won't impact surroundings adversely. And then, obviously, again, the big one at the end there is, is this situation where in which granting this variance is going to provide a option for further variances to be granted moving forward, continuing from this point, which is Craig's point, that is it a code change that is needed or is it essentially just continuing to grant variances if we just heard that there are potentially other cell towers coming online within the community? So, is granting this variance going forward that really the avenue for approach or should it be reworking of the code in and of itself? Again, staff is recommending denial of the variance, obviously. Staff is recommending denial of the special exception as proposed. However, should the zoning board and council wish to approve it, we would consider, again, limiting the tower to 75 feet in height with the following conditions. So, again, it would be a period until time of DO was submitted, that the site would match the different plans provided to you in your staff report, be it the site plan and the landscaping plan. Any changes or alterations to the provided plan, but obviously you can go through review, which could potentially require an entry hearing. And again, any kind of specifications or modifications you would like to make as the board or his council would like to make independently of that.
Before you move on...
Yes, sir.
Sean, just to clarify...
Yes.
Of your, if the, if the board moves to approve the special exception...
Yes, sir.
The only condition on there that is not mutually exclusive of that approval is the 75 feet?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so if they decide to go to 120 feet, you wouldn't need to change any of the other conditions. It would just be that one condition that you would drop.
Correct.
To make sure that's clear for...
Hmm. Does he have any additional questions? Maybe you can go back through the slides. If you'd like to explain something a little more thoroughly, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I'd like to hear some, from the attorney, that they used, who's on the phone if possible, about whether this is, fits under what is a variance or is it, whether it is more akin to a sort of backdoor way to change the code.
Well, that would be Mr. Spain. And I want to clarify for the record, what the, Mr. Spain is representing staff as an advocate on this issue and I'm, I'm just advising the board as to other issues. So, Mr. Spain wants to render an opinion on that if he heard the question. Now is his opportunity to do so.
Thank you. And on the issue of variance, I would echo, I know the definition was put up on the board and I have the definition before me from Section 4-2. But there's a distinction between a variance and what sometimes is referred to as a use variance. A use variance would be an example of when you go to the zoning table and there's not a check in the table or a P or a C for permitted or conditional use, and the applicant were to come in and say, hey, I want you to grant me a variance so I can have a use that otherwise is not allowed in this particular zoning district. And a use variance is prohibited generally not only by prevailing land use and zoning law, but expressly under your code, under the definition of variance and the definition of a use variance. A variance, on the other hand, is where the proposed use is actually allowed in the existing zoning category, but the applicant is asking for a variation from either typically a setback height, lot, lot dimensions, width, depth, open space, buffers, potentially a parking requirement. So, in this case, when it comes to a cell tower, as you've heard both from the applicant and staff, a cell tower is allowed within the residential district. What's being requested in this case, it would want to be a use variance, which would be prohibited under your code. Rather, it would be a variance request where the applicant is saying, we need to vary from the otherwise applicable height limitation and here are the reasons why. And then you turn to your code requirements on whether or not they've met their requirements to receive a variance, which as the city attorney indicated are in Section 4-131. There was a reference that the variance criteria are only in 4-1225 of the Land Development Code, and those criteria actually are the special exception criteria, they aren't the variance criteria. There's, at least in my opinion, there's a leftover Scrivener's era in the wireless communications provisions that references, has a cross-reference to 4-1225 for variances. But if you were on the zoning board back when this ordinance was amended, prior to the adoption of this ordinance... prior to the adoption of this ordinance, that Section 4-1225 was entitled variance criteria, and it was amended in 2015 to change it to special exception criteria. So to answer the ultimate question on whether or not this is a request to change the code or whether it's a request for a variance, I would say that it's a request for a variance, and they're asking to essentially vary from the otherwise applicable max height, 75 feet with a special exception. The issue becomes is whether they've complied with the express variance criteria, one of which Mr. Givens talked about, is whether or not the requested variance is going to be of a recurring nature. And I think that's where, Council member questioned earlier about the concern that this is going to become a recurring nature, that there's going to be tower after tower seeking to exceed 75 feet. And if that truly is the case, then that would be a policy issue that the city council should address and evaluate whether or not it would amend the code.
So now can I, could I ask the attorney who advises us? So we've got, we've got the reasoning behind what the advice to the staff was. But if, if we were to find that or conclude that this is of a current recurring nature, would it be incumbent on that us to say no and let the city council deal with it? Or do you think it fits under, enough under the variance and you don't think it's going to be recurring that we go ahead? That's kind of a mushy question, I'm sorry.
It is not my opinion that it is a, an item that would be appropriate to punt to the city council for an application that's pending for you today. It is probably an item for, after action is taken on this item, it should be referenced to the city council to reconsider their 2015 ordinance and look at that issue. You heard, but what I would qualify as competent substantial evidence today by, by both the applicant and staff, that there are a number of towers in the community and that the average height of those towers well exceeds the 75 feet. So you take that in one hand and then take the fact that the ordinance passed in 2015 specifically references the ability to ask for variances in height. And I would conclude that the city council sort of knew what they were doing at the time and said, you know, variances at this height or below, we're just going to allow those to be addressed either, as Sean pointed, at the staff level if the zoning area allows it, or to go through an additional process in public hearing to make sure those concerns about compatibility are addressed through that process. And so I, I think that this is, like many other variances that may occur for non-standard items that affect neighboring properties, it's appropriate for it to go through the public hearing process. I think maybe there may be a consideration that the council will have to look at would be if they were just going to raise the height limit overall, then there would be no public hearing. It would just be approved.
But I'm stuck on the point that in 2015, not so long ago, they said you can have a special exception of 75 feet. There's nothing in the record to suggest that technology has changed since then, that there have been substantial changes. It's not for us to substitute our judgment for that of the city council. They're the legislative body. We are not. And they spoke clearly on that. I'm very sympathetic to the, to the applicant here.
And they, but they also put forth in that ordinance in 2015 the ability to ask and specifically referenced co-locations as the, an ability to get additional height in order to minimize the number of actual towers that go up in order to allow one tower with additional height to serve multiple vendors.
Right. But here, that's a point we'll take in. However, here, the proof is that the design of this tower limits the ability of all the providers to participate in it. There was nothing that precluded the applicant from providing a different design which would have allowed all four providers to participate. But if, if you got to come down with this design and, and then the third person in is at 60 feet or whatever the number is, it, it, it just flies in the face of having a 120-foot tower.
I believe the applicant...
And the fourth one down is at 40 feet.
I believe the, I mean, that's something in question for the applicant, but I believe that's the applicant's original design was requesting a higher tower in order to be able to co-locate more users. But then that buffered against the staff's concerns about addability of others.
It deals with one issue, the height. It doesn't deal with the design of the tower. And there were plenty of options here, it seems to me, that, that, that they had. And I have no idea why, there's nothing in the record thus far, why they chose this particular design other than the fact that it was council's provision that there was nothing, no definition for, for the camouflage, which of course you disagree with.
I will point out just, just as a, having, having seen these camouflage towers before, that unless you are in an area where, for instance, there are a lot of very tall pine trees, then the camouflaging aspect of a giant pine tree is lost. And so there may be several considerations that would have occurred.
Dino the dinosaur could be up there, right? Well, I, I just come back to this, and I want to be clear from you on this, that, and we've had this problem before where somebody's coming and wants to have something changed that really the law should be changed to deal with. And I think you know without my, you're back there what that is. And I'm troubled by that, that where the, the council can make rules that people really in this town strongly support, like 75 feet is our height limit. And the expectation is that you can get around that by going through a variance procedure where we can just say, well, that's not really a big deal because it's not going to occur again. And so it's a very one-time sort of exception. But I think it's kind of, you know, the ostrich with their head in the sand to think that we're not going to have other applications for higher towers for this, and probably higher and higher, although until somebody figures out how to do it without towers, which I have no doubt eventually we will figure out, you know, we don't use horses and everything.
The record suggests that nobody would have signed on if it were only 75 feet.
Yeah. So I just, I don't, I, I'm troubled to use the zoning board as a way to sort of be a duck blind for the council to say, oh, the zoning board approved this, we'll go ahead with it, when our job is to make sure that the law is what we follow. And the council's job is make sure that the law makes sense. And it may be that this law doesn't make sense in this world as we live now. And so I'm, I'm asking you as the attorney, that if I were to vote in favor of this, wouldn't I be ignoring one of these criteria that says it's not supposed to be a recur, it's supposed to be an exception, not something that's likely to occur again, again?
The language in the variance provisions about recurring items is fairly common in standard language. It's been duplicated in numerous communities as sort of coming down from on high in various zoning enabling acts, model acts. Those, those types of provisions are generally trying to address, I'll call it, very repeated items, things like driveways, issues that are occurring on a far more regular basis. The purpose of the zoning board, your special exception criteria, your, your various criteria, is to act as a check and a safety valve against a very inflexible code. And when you are, to balance the issues, particularly with such a situation such as a cellphone tower, which is having both height issues, location issues, things like that, it's very difficult for the legislatures, for the council, to draft a code that fits all circumstances. And so what I'm sort of saying is, you were going to hear this one way or the other, whether they move the height up a little bit or not, because the various factors in each specific siting are going to drive that, drive that application. And there may be many places where 75 feet may be fine. And it may be fine for one vendor, if an AT&amp;T, for instance, was going to put up a tower. They may not be concerned about co-locating other towers. Of course, that runs into a policy conflict with the city's code, which is trying to add more co-location. But what you've heard in the testimony today is, it appears now that there are now third-party vendors who are putting these towers up, consolidating all, all of the service providers on one vendor. It may have been fine that 70, at 75 feet, individual vendors may build towers for themselves, and there'd just be a lot more of them, and that would be fine. But I, so I'm not, I'm not, it's not self-evident to me that this will be a constantly recurring issue and that it, I think it's an issue that should probably be addressed with the city council, but I don't think that it's an issue that necessitates recommending denial of a variance based on that one criteria.
Maybe a little bit of history for this particular ordinance as well. Numerous workshops, hearings, discussions on this happened. In the general direction at the risk of oversimplification was a question of fewer towers of taller height or more towers of lesser height. As the council considered that, they generally tended to look for more towers at a lesser height with the possibility of different options, everything from buildings to camouflage to stealth towers. That was their general feeling. That was the preference, that's what they wanted to see. However, they also recognized the fact that there are going to be situations that could fall outside of that general direction of prerogative. And because of that, they addressed that by allowing a variance procedure. So in terms of a continuing nature, I don't think it was anything that was outside of what they had anticipated. Especially at this point, having seen one request come in since 2015, I don't know if it rises to that level. But that's at least what the general consensus was at the time.
Does counsel for the applicant want to add anything to that discussion?
To what the staff has just presented to you?
This, this question of, of whether or not we're legislating.
Well, I think you've heard me say already, I, I think that your code language built in that, that provision, recognizing that the height limitations might not always work. It's built right into your code that variances and deviations will be allowed. And I think we've presented competent substantial evidence today that, that would support that. I do want to just clarify one, I, I'm sorry that I've confused you about the tower capabilities. You had a question or a concern about a different design of the tower might accommodate more users. This tower is proposed to be constructed capable of supporting four users. We have to, we have to make that decision upfront because this is a tower that's, that is supported by a foundation in the ground. These are, there are structural loading concerns. So we need to make a decision upfront how sturdy we're going to build it, to simplify it. We are going to build it sturdy enough to accommodate four users. But they don't, they have to stack on top of each other. And they stack on top of each other no matter what design you use. There isn't a design, tower design out there that we're aware of that you can put all of the carriers at the same height. They have to be stacked. And even a pine tree would stack the tower, the users, on the tree trunk based on their rad center. So I'm not, I, I hope I've cleared that up, that they're really, this design does accommodate four users.
Thank you.
Most of them do.
Could I ask one more question? Is there any advantage to a company to being the top on the stack? The second, the third, the fourth?
Well, it, well, from a strict...
Well, I mean from a provision of service level, that's what I mean.
Right. Well, if you think about, and, and, you know, the RF guys have taught me a lot over the years. Think of coverage like a flashlight. You have the light on. When you raise the flashlight higher, the circle on the ground gets bigger. You bring the flashlight down.
So basically, you're telling...
So there is, but not every service, it isn't, there isn't a uni, the staff asked me this question as we were processing the application. Is there a uniform height for everybody? No. All the carriers have different designs. They operate on different frequencies. They have different needs. You know, the, you heard the AT&amp;T, George tell you that his need is really a congestion issue. The AT&amp;T, or T-Mobile's need is more of a coverage issue. So you get different heights, and it's all also predicated on what the surrounding heights are located at. It's, it's a, there's a whole bunch of factors that go into that. So from a strict coverage perspective, yes, it probably is better to be at the top. And T-Mobile came to the table first. They're the anchor tenant. They have the top slot. Fortunately, the slot below them works for, for AT&amp;T. If AT&amp;T had come to us and said, gosh, I got to have 120, we would have said, sorry, you know, T-Mobile's already got that slot.
Is there anything further that the city wants to add?
Do you have any other questions? No.
And would you like to add anything, counselor?
I...
For the applicant?
I, you know, I think we have, we beat this as much as we can. And you've all asked very good questions. We appreciate your patience. And again, I told you you were going to earn your keep today. Thank you very much.
Before, before it's our turn, I will call for public comment at this time. Is there any public comment?
Hi, I'm Ernie Harvard. I've lived here in Benita for 62 and a half years, so I've... But I don't want to talk to you about me living here for that many years. I want to say that I still live here. And our church is a very small church. I'm not saying that because I'm trying to get, receive this money that we get, receive for allowing the tower to be built there. God will provide our needs. He always has, he always will. But as a person who lives here, and I just, I, I think they did a really great job. Most of you, I know your education level is way above mine, so I know you're very intelligent people. I'm going to speak just a little bit about common sense. To me, I live here. I, I have to also work by vocational. I use my cellphone every day. We're saying that we don't need coverage in that area. I go there. I'm a pastor there. Don't, even outside in the parking lot, I can, when I had the other three I had and two of my employees had the other two carriers, before I switched to the one I have now, I couldn't even send a picture in the parking lot. And at my house, which I live a mile and a half, two miles away, I have to go outside with, with the other carrier that I had just to send a picture. And, and my business and almost everybody that's in business, we rely on our cellphones. And we have to have our cellphones, and they have to be working. But we're not going to be competitive with everybody else. We can't do it. And to have to walk outside of a building to send something tells me that something's lacking in that area. Then the next thing is, back when this height restrictions and all these rules were made, they were not doing it the way they're doing it now. It was cellphone companies coming in, building a tower. So if we continue doing it that way, we're going to have towers everywhere because you're going to have one company per tower. This way, the way they're doing it, you'll get all four. So that means much less towers. Again, to me, that's, common sense says that, that's good. We don't have to have so many towers. If you look at it, it's not something bad to look at. We don't have to have a great big flag. In fact, we wanted a cross. We'd love to have a cross. But whatever is approved, that's what we would love, you know, fine with. And, and we don't want anything offensive. And another thing that is, I think, common sense too is that none of us have the knowledge of those two men that walked up here in that area. I'm a painting contractor. I go out and I give you an estimate to paint the outside of your house for $4,000, and then we're all done, and you turn and say, well, I want to use a way cheaper paint and save $100. Then I'm going to look at you and say, no, we're not going to do that. I don't do that. Because you don't want to go less and not accomplish everything that you can accomplish. You want to get accomplished what needs to be accomplished. And the other thing, we even talked about it a little bit here, is, is you're going to be making decisions about congestions on road. be making decisions about congestions on road. We have to look at this as the same way, it's congestion. If you don't get that congestion, Benita's growing, and that area, right there, in that area, is growing by people, not by houses being built and that sort of thing, but people greatly. I mean, and we have so many there that rely on their cellphones. And I think we're depriving the people of Benita in that area if we don't give them what they need to be able to compete out in this competitive world as people. And I think we're hurting ourselves, we're not getting rid of the congestion. You would not build small two-lane roads to get rid of highly congested traffic. You're going to build a highway to get them, get it moving and be adequate for what you need.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time, and I know it's a hard decision, whatever you come up with, and I ask God's will. Thank you.
Is there anything further from the applicant? Anything further from the city? Hearing none, is there any further public comment? Okay, it's our turn. So there are two, there are two questions before us. One is, should we approve a special exception? And second, the second issue is, if we approve the special exception, the applicant is requesting a variance from the special exception, height limitation of seventy-five feet to go to 120 feet. So those are the two questions. Discussion, the board?
I, if I may.
Please.
I'm in fa, I will say I'm in favor of it. I use my cellphone, I'm in a business that relies so heavily on cellphone transmission, sending photos. I'm a realtor, so I'm constantly sending documents and photos over the airwaves. And we have a lot of dead zones, so I think we need to have the variance, this exception. And I think also I would recommend that the powers that be look at changing the code to, to consider the height. Technology's changing, it may not be a problem in the future, but today it is. And so I would urge my fellow zoning members to consider my, what I'm saying here. Cellphones are a fact of life. I don't see them going away anytime soon. The jet's in age is, is here.
Any further comments from the board?
I, I would be okay to go along with this under this condition, that we make this very clear, that this is an exception, and that this isn't a way to deal with cellphone towers in the future, that if we want to have a general rule that cell towers are something extraordinary, that because of their nature, they need to be taller, that the city council needs to change the code to reflect that. And that I would be opposed to any other special exception based on the notion that this is something inherent in this being a cell tower as a way to get this. And I do that to a large extent on your basis. Reality is, this is an issue we have to deal with, but law and the whole process of making these decisions is also important because that's how we hold our elected officials accountable. And if we let people like us do that instead of them, and I know they will, we can't do it alone, they have to affirm this, but I think that's a very bad precedent. So I'd like to say I appreciate the attention that the staff has given to this in paying attention to the law, because I think that is important, and I'm a little uncomfortable, as you can probably tell, about this approach. But I would be in favor of going on so long as the, that we make clear in our motion that this is a one-time exception, and that to the extent this goes on, it's a, we're pushing it back where it belongs to the council.
Further comment? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the special exception?
I will make a motion to approve the special exception.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Craig?
Yes.
Member Winn?
Yes.
Chairman Kerlander?
Yes.
Member Brunswick?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Worster?
Yes.
Member and Serpi?
Yes.
Okay, the next question before us is the, is whether or not to grant a variance to the special exception. Is there any discussion?
Second that.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the special.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
To grant the variance.
To grant the variance.
And I'm going to make clear that I'm going to vote against that to make sure that this council understands that I consider this, increasing this height to be their job. So I'm going to say, just so you'll know, that's the purpose of my note.
Okay. Any further discussion? So there's a motion to approve the variance. It has a second, does anybody else wish to be heard? Roll call.
Member Winn?
Yes.
Chairman Kerlander?
Yes.
Member Brunswick?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Worster?
Yes.
Member and Serpi?
Yes.
Member Craig?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So we, we have an issue here with the following cases. There are two more cases. We have some members who are forced to leave at one o'clock. So where's the, is the counsel for the, for the applicant ready to go?
Did we, did they hang up, did they hang up, counsel on the phone? Okay.
Got some members are going to leave in an hour, so.
We'll talk about it.
Other members will be hungry before that.
While you were outside, I made the point that we have some members who have to leave by one o'clock.
I think we're...
So if we could...
We have talked about in light of how long that case went, trying to do an abbreviated, I know we're not on the record, but one of the things we can do is submit the, or make sure that the application and sufficiencies and the staff report are all on the record, and we can just have you ask questions. We can be that short, so, you know, we'll talk about it when we're on the record, but let us know your preference, and we can work with that.
So, counselor, for you.
Approved.
So, the suggestion has been made that we deal with the issues, but that would require that there be some acknowledgement of the sufficiency of the application. How do you feel about that?
I am all in favor of getting to the real issues of the matter. If, I don't want to throw staff off, but if the...
Which one are we on?
How many deny?
This is New Moon.
Sure.
So what, so we'll do that then, if that's okay with the board, that we...
No, Winn and I, one of us were out in the hall when you swore people in, so we're not sworn.
Okay. Well, that's very nice, it's too late.
So is the board, you're okay with us just going to the issues?
Right.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So that being the case, what, you know, I've read the materials, I'm not sure I understand that there are a lot of issues here.
Sounds like there aren't any from staff's perspective.
Right.
How about this, I'll swear in the witnesses, the applicants can make their, their presentation. If the count, if the board feels at that point that they, that they've met the standards and they don't need to hear from staff, you could, you could move faster that way.
We should always give staff an opportunity, that would be my view.
Or staff can just say, "We agree with all of it," that's too, that's possible too. You got everyone here? Hey, anyone who hasn't been sworn yet and intends to speak today, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. Nice, right.
The next case is the New Moon Residential Plan Development Amendment, and the applicant has submitted an application and sufficiency responses, which has been found sufficient and reviewed by staff, and a staff report has been issued. And so we would submit that those, all of those items should be part of the record in the case. Mr. Arnold is here, he has been previously accepted and qualified as an expert in planning. He can give you a really quick run-through if that would help you, and in the interest of time, because it is, in my mind, I think it's pretty straightforward, I'm hopeful that if we have questions, we can just address your questions.
Okay. I'm Wayne Arnold, certified planner, and I just wanted to say that this project is currently zoned RPD through your process, it expired, and this would have been going through a different process a couple of years ago, but you changed your code and now required to go back through the same findings for a full rezoning, so we've been at that process. We had our neighborhood informational meeting, I don't think we had any objectors to the project. This is for six single-family lots. I know I had a brief conversation with Mr. Worster about the access road that services this project, and I think, Mr. Worster, to your comment, we haven't really looked at the engineering aspect of this to put in a cul-de-sac in lieu of the dead-end street, but we'd certainly accept a condition that would ask us to look at that engineering exercise. We have met with the fire district, and they've preliminary approved the design that we have in your master concept plan. But if you're, if you all collectively think that we should look at something that could be a cul-de-sac, we'd be happy to evaluate that as part of the further review of the project. We're in agreement with all of staff's recommended conditions, and we're consistent with your comprehensive plan, and we've met the criteria for a PD rezoning in the city. So any questions, we'll be happy to answer that. And we have our team of experts here if you do have specific questions regarding environment, traffic, surface water management, et cetera.
I have a question, maybe you can put the site plan up on the, on the screen that shows the roads situation. One thing I didn't understand is the location and relevance of Lightner Creek, and how it, how it flows and what potential impact it would have on the subdivision if it, if it's a flooding issue.
If you'd like, I can have Mike Dellett, a professional engineer who worked on it, talk to you a little bit about that issue, and I think you'll see from our master plan that the areas that are adjacent to Lightner Creek are part of our open space water management system.
Right.
Mr. Dellett has previously testified and been accepted as an expert in civil engineering state of Florida, we'd ask that he be still accepted here today.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Mike Dellett with Grady Minor Engineers. I'll just bring up the plan here. So the creek has a, is a, located in a FEMA floodway, and our plan has so identified, let me go on right by here, that's the old plan. We so identified the floodway here. So the idea of showing it on the plan here is that we take care in the design of the water management system, but there's no encroachment within that floodway area, and we'll work with staff to, some assurances in that regard.
Will you point out again where the creek is on that map?
Well, generally the floodway, I'm not sure of the exact creek location, but the floodway associated with that is this line right here.
And Mr. Dellett, there is, there are conditions relative to the floodway and to future drainage modeling in the staff report, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I did some thinking about your floor plan, or your site plan, and I had some real problems with the dead-end street presented, and yesterday I worked up a little sketch in my mind, and as Mr. Arnold pointed out, I'd like to, I've got a couple extra copies here, if you could pass them down.
I saw his earlier.
The idea of possibly adjusting your layout to a quasi-cul-de-sac at the end with a one-lane semi-roundabout, I guess that's the best description for it, that would allow vehicles to move through the development without having to back up to get out, or pull into somebody's driveway and turn around to get out. This would include, I know you got a mailbox at the kiosk shown, but the mailman has to, a mail person has to get out, get away from there, that means they back up. If they could just pull around and always be going forward, but more specifically, deliveries, FedEx trucks, and that sort of deliveries with a good-sized vehicle, would, this would be, that my sketch might be more convenient for the operational use of the street, and I would like to, like for you to work real hard on trying to get that sort of a traffic flow into this approval.
Well, I think Mr. Dellett saw your exhibit, and I think we're happy to try to look at that. I don't know that we can get there with the turning radius, et cetera, as you've designed it. I think it's paramount that we don't lose one of our six lots. I mean, what we didn't have, you do, we have representatives from Habitat here who are going to tell you just how important these six lots and the others that are part of the Rosemary Park project are to them and this organization, because it's really hard for them to deliver these product. And, you know, part of the reason we came to this design, Mr. Worster, was that the design of the homes, and we've got some images in this presentation, their, their houses have grown with the need, so they have three- and four-bedroom models, that, I've got a couple of photographs, it would be the same for both, but just to give you an example, these are new product that they're bringing online. They all have a one-car garage, so the lot size requirements have gone up a little bit for what they're trying to do here to respond to some of the issues you've had in other communities where parking has been an issue. So they have the garage parking as well as the driveway parking for the homes. But that's one of the reasons, the orientation, and then the other thing that, as I mentioned to you, the condominiums to the south, your staff feels that they have a prescriptive easement across part of this property that goes to their recreation center. So we tried to accommodate a design that allowed us to have a multipurpose road, if you will, it serves our six lots as well as provides limited access for the condominiums to continue to service their recreation component.
I'd just like to emphasize that what the sketch I gave you created six lots.
It did. What I don't know is, you know, just having seen that this morning, whether or not, when you put the template on it for turnarounds, when staff looks at it, they're going to expect a certain radius on that to make sure that it functions for the apparatus that would need to get there, and I just don't know that that specific design does that. It may very well do.
I understand there has to be some tweaking to make sure that things can move around, but however, standards, design standards for turning radiuses, we might want to allow a backup, one backup to make a turn for a very big truck, as opposed to everybody having to pull into a driveway to turn around to get back.
I understand your thought.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Arnold?
No.
Anything further from the applicant at this time?
No, if you have any other questions, we're happy to respond to them.
For the city?
For the staff, just so everyone understands, kind of the antithesis for the site redesign really stems from the Spanish Gardens Homeowners Association Recreational Tract. If you see on page ninety-seven of your staff report, that is the existing zoning as it exists today, and that's where, at the public hearing in 2005, that association had attended and voiced their concerns about maintaining access. about maintaining access to their recreational tract. So, understanding that, you'll also see in your packet, it's their plat on page 109, which shows the recreation tract. And then, on page 111, there's a sheet from the local development order that was never approved, that kind of shows that road. And Ms. Montgomery is correct, and we are treating that as a prescriptive easement. So, we appreciate Habitat working with us to go ahead and accommodate that access. Otherwise, we're really in agreement with the amendment as proposed.
Anything from the board? Anything further from the applicant?
Yes, sir.
A public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move to accept.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. Wonderful thing.
Any discussion? Mr. Worcester?
Wait a minute. Accept their presentation or accept the idea that we're going to require them to look at this alternate?
If you wish to make that an amendment, I would be happy to. I was accepting the staff's report.
I'd like to suggest we amend it to include an analysis by the applicant to consider the traffic flow as presented by a sketch that's been presented.
So, that's, they have to consider it?
Yes.
That's the extent?
Board seen the sketch? Has everyone else seen the sketch?
Yes.
It's right here.
Okay. So, this is a friendly amendment.
Yes, yes.
And you accept the amendment, so we don't have to vote separately on that. So, as amended, there's a motion to approve. And there's a second. Any final discussion?
All I'll do is, just as a caveat, staff will look at it with the applicant to see if it can be as an alternative and replacement master concept plan.
As acceptable to the city.
Yeah.
Right. Roll call, please.
Chairman Kerlander?
Yes.
Member Brunswick?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Worster?
Yes.
Member Inserpi?
Yes.
Member Craig? Member Wen?
Yes.
So, that is unanimously approved. The next case is the Renaissance at Rosemary Park Residential Plan Development Amendment. For the applicant?
Yes, sir. The applicant is here. All the expert witnesses are here. Again, in the interest of time, we would submit that we accept the staff report and the staff conditions. And so, we would submit that the applicant's sufficiency responses in the staff report be made part of the record as the competent substantial evidence. And Mr. Arnold's here, can give you a brief presentation. Once again, he is an expert in planning and zoning, and will answer questions if you have any.
With that, I'll start. I'm Wayne Arnold, certified planner with Grady Minor. What I have on the screen for you is the approved master concept plan. This also is zoned RPD, and it was designed in two phases. The phase one portion, that's in the northern portion of the site, has been developed with single-family residences. This, in essence, is a redesign of phase two. It does eliminate two of the lots that were previously approved, but it realigns those to accommodate the larger footprint units that Habitat now wishes to build in the city of Bonita. So, this reflects a couple of things we've done. We have a driveway exhibit that shows how we can accommodate some additional parking for this phase of the project. Staff was a little concerned early on about Streetsboro Drive, so we've accommodated that with a little bit of design difference for our driveways. You'll see as an inset to the bottom right on the screen. And again, it's for 14 lots. We worked with your tree advisory board. They've approved an alternative, which is why you find a condition in there about upsizing some of the landscape materials. Marco Espinar, our environmental consultant, worked with your tree advisory board to do that, and working with a native tree provider locally to do the upsizing on the landscaping. We're in agreement with staff's conditions on this one, and would hope you can support it.
Mr. Arnold, in the last matter, Mr. Worcester raised a concern about how the street configuration was, is it, is there a turnaround in this 14-unit? I didn't see it.
No, there isn't exactly a turnaround, but if you notice, which one of these is the highlighter? I think that one. You'll see, we have this area right here. It's like a hammerhead turn, the fire department would call it, where a vehicle could turn in and then back out in a K-type turning movement. So, that was one of my thoughts for, you know, the other side. There could be, you know, something that we could do in that regard as well. That was acceptable to the fire district in this particular case. And then, of course, there was a deviation for access separation, but I think staff's fine with that. It's such a low number of units associated with it.
The fire department's okay.
They seem to be so far. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question relative to a case we just had? This is one of those places where it's a very small distance between the properties. And one of our most recent cases was when they wanted to put outside air conditioning units between them, and they didn't meet the setback. Could we straighten that out here so they don't have to come back for a separate variation in the future? If we're going to allow these, you know, 10-feet separations, we have to be able to adjust to the fact that you're going to have to have things.
I think here.
Is it in there? And I haven't seen.
Here, it says they can't do the, with the five-foot separation, they can't put air conditioning. It's specifically precluded, as I recall the reading, the material.
Where are they going to put the air conditioning?
In the back or.
Oh, in the back? Is there room there? I just, that was one of those things where you approve something that created a problem in the future, that would be a lot easier to solve now if that's a problem.
And Ms. Craig, I don't think we're going to have that issue. It's my understanding that with the new Habitat home design, they either provide those in the rear yard or in the front yard that are been surrounded.
Okay, so that won't. That seems just like an awful waste of time for them to come back when we'd approved what was supposed to be built and didn't think forward to that.
Agreed.
As long as that's solved, I'm, you know.
We'll work with staff to avoid that.
Mr. Arnold, one question I have, this is in a FEMA flood zone, I believe.
I'll refer to Mr. Dellett.
Yeah, right.
In that regard, but I believe it is, yes. He's nodding in agreement.
Do we know what the, could you tell us what the elevation of the road is?
I'll have Mike Dellett come up and try to answer that for you. Mr. Donley?
For the record, again, I'm Mike Dellett with Grady Minor Engineers. The, I believe the FEMA elevation there is 13, somewhere in that regard. And the road elevation is somewhere, the proposed road elevation internally is around 11, and the road elevation along Streetsboro, I believe, is in the 10 range.
Okay.
Habitat, if you saw those pictures, they built a stem wall home, so that elevation can go up accordingly to.
It's one of those pictures you, we saw in the last, from the previous project. That's the design they would use here?
Yes, similar design for.
Thank you.
And just for the record, condition four, I, has the information, says current flood zone for the proposed project is AE-12, per Florida Building Code. The finished floor elevation needs to be one foot above the flood zone, which in this instance would be 13 feet, so that is a condition.
Right. My concern was, you didn't tell us what the road was, so it was hard to visualize what the slope would be going up to the house. But just clarified that, and we thank you.
Anything further from the applicant?
We don't have anything further. We'll answer any questions from the public or from the board.
What about the staff? Want to add anything?
Again, at this time, staff, if the applicant wanted to accept staff's recommendations, staff has no qualms or boundaries about the project at this point in time, unless the conditions provided in the staff report.
Anything further? Any public comment? Hearing none?
I guess we don't have to respond then.
Is there a motion?
You make the motion, we accept the staff documentation.
Is there a second?
I second it.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? Everybody said everything they want to say? Okay, roll call.
Member Brunswick?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Worster?
Yes.
Member Inserpi?
Yes.
Member Craig? Member Wen?
Yes.
Chairman Kerlander?
Yes.
Okay, so is there?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for making sure you got to us before you have to leave.
So, is there anything further to come before the board?
Worthy of being done.
We've approved the minutes.
And we approved the minutes at the beginning.
We did?
We did. So, the next meeting is October 15th. Do we know what's on the agenda yet for October 15th? So, we can plan our days better, perhaps?
The Habitat for Humidity has another rezoning case. It's a new zoning action, so that we hope we'll be coming to you at your October 15th meeting.
Is that the, that's basically?
I think that's the only one that is ready for publication.
Okay, great.
We'll find some.
Okay. Anybody else want to say anything? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.